Good evening. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Cholo City Council to order. By roll call, see that six of our council members are present tonight. We have a council member, Brad Clark, who's via, I don't know, wait, you got a phone or something down there tonight. So he'll be able to hear and participate in the decision-making process tonight as well. Would like to welcome those of you who are here with us in the audience tonight, as well as those who may be watching tonight on Cholo TV or some other means of broadcast. We have a special guest tonight. I want to introduce you guys to Flat Stanley. Okay? Flat Stanley was sent to me by my grandson, Bruin Hanson. And the way this works is I'm supposed to take this guy for the last six weeks or so, everywhere I go, and do things, and write about it, and send a little collage back. So he's doing his civic duty tonight. Okay, so that's Flat Stanley here. Glad to have him with us, you know, as he's getting involved. I just want to say thank you for those that are here tonight. We're grateful that you're here in public and be able to hear your voices concerned. And as we follow the agenda tonight, we'll explain a little bit more about this meeting and the process here of the public hearing. We'd like to begin by an invocation. I will offer that. Followed by, tonight we'll have a video of the National Anthem by Cholo Biz Choir. Those who'd like to join with us, please stand. Our dear heavenly Father, we are so grateful for the opportunity we have to meet together in the city of Cholo. We're grateful for the citizens and those people who live within this community. We're grateful for the health and the strength that we've enjoyed through this pandemic, and for those people who have been able to put forth the very best of citizens and very best in medicine and the very best care in helping one another. And we are grateful for the efforts and for the decisions that we're making as a community. Father, we're grateful for the opportunity that we have to live in a nation that's free, that we've gone through a political process, and we pray that we might be able to come together as a country, stand united, and be able to do the best as within our abilities as citizens. As much as we have a topic tonight, we pray that we might have thy guidance and direction, that we might be able to have wisdom beyond the mean our own, we might be able to make decisions that are, will affect this community, that will be good for the whole. We're grateful unto thee. We're grateful for those who fight in our armed service. We're grateful for those who represent us and sacrifice daily. We're grateful for these community members who have fasted and donated, and the community fasting for the efforts, the blessing the lives of those who have a little less. And as we turn towards the season of holidays and giving and Christmas, we pray that we might remember thee and strive to do the things that we can do to be kinder and to be better citizens. And we ask for thy guidance and direction this night in all that we do, and give thee thanks in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose crushed stars and bright stars through the perilous fight, o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still, our flag was still there. All saints, that star-spangled banner yet wave, o'er the lands of the free and the home of the brave, home of the brave.
Thank you, and thank you to Showbiz Choir. They wanted to come and perform in person tonight, but we knew we'd have a crowd due to social distancing and some restraints. We asked them to send a video. We want to remind you about the thing that they're doing, the festival that they put forth, the, what's it called? Feast of Carols they've done years for years, and I think she'll share that a little later here. But fantastic. Our first item we have is Call to the Public. This is not the public hearing, so we will open that later, but anybody that has a matter that's not on the agenda tonight, this is the time, if you'd like to share that, Call to the Public, know that your comments are limited to three minutes. So we'll open Call to the Public at this time. Seeing nobody moved, Call to the Public. I'll close Call to the Public and come back to special events. We have a presentation by Cholo High School Choir, Showbiz, okay? So this time we have Josh Kittle, student director for Feast of Carols. Josh, come on up. Introduce who's with you. I don't have her name.
I'm Sierra.
So I'm Josh Kittle, and this is Sierra, and we're the, I'm the king of the Highlands, and she's the queen of the Highlands in the upcoming 36th Annual Feast of Carols on December 9th through 12th. There are five shows this year. The dessert night on December 9th, tickets are $9. The dinner shows on the 10th through 12th, tickets are $22. And there's a soup and salad matinee on the 12th as well. Tickets are $18.
The evening shows start at 7:00 PM, and the December 12th matinee starts at noon.
And we are taking COVID-19 precautions this year. Masks are required for entry, and there is limited seating due to social distancing.
The tickets can be sold online via email at feastofcarols@yahoo.com.
If you request a ticket reservation form, it will be sent to you, and a representative will get back to you on the ticket purchase. And we just really look forward to seeing as many people as possible come see our show. It's going to be a really good one.
Fantastic. We appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for being here. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're gonna have a short video here of their choir singing one of the songs from the Feast of Carols.
Silent night, high and dark, o'erish the thine song, what, no, the strife, the old high and dark, hold the grave in low, hidden heart, slaw the grimness, shaloo, shaloo. Silent night, holy night, fall is calm, all is bright, round your virgin mother and child, holy infant, so tender and mild, sleep in heavenly peace, sleep in heavenly peace.
Appreciate that, Showbiz. Let's give them a We have fantastic youth in our community, and it's great to share with them and that talent that they have. Next item we have is another special event here for the Cholo Chamber of Commerce. I'll turn the time to Rob Hepner, the acting director here of the chamber, and Tricia Spear. Thank you, guys, for being here.
Yeah, and Tricia Spear. So we're excited that we got a great big turnout again for the chamber report.
You guys are doing great. You keep coming every month. That's why you're on that plan now, okay?
We see now. So numbers are pretty straightforward. You can see on the screens there, the Facebook reach is consistent. Google is the actual Google page where people, when they search to find a business, they interact, and that's usually how they get a telephone number or things like that. You'll see that that's actually doing pretty well. And another one of note is Pinterest. We've been buoying all the businesses that are Cholo Chamber members as their own little pin, and that's actually helping and growing and getting attention. So that was one of Courtney at the building there. She's been doing that and doing well with it, as you can see by the numbers. Instagram's pretty straightforward, 500 average per post. We're still planning for Cholo Days and Derby Down the Deuce. We're still planning for the annual meeting, and we've had some discussions about the Chamber breakfast, but, and talks with the hospital and things going around, it'll probably be stalling that off a little bit longer because gatherings aren't going to be where we need to be to be able to do that. So the in-person, once again, we're looking to refinance the building. We've had one turned down so far in being able to do that. So we're looking at another bank to hopefully try to refinance the building to reduce the cost of that payment and make it a little more stable for us moving forward. Get feedback as we get that. We had a meeting today with the Arizona Office of Tourism, their visitor information center that actually went really well. We had some concerns about things we could do in the building in hours. You'll noted, we actually have our hours from 9:00 to 4:00, Monday through Friday. And that's specifically because it's eight hours a day, which ends up being 40 hours with a single individual. At 41 hours, you get into the overtime, so it'd be easier for us to deal with that. Saturdays were off during the winter months, so that takes that up. If we can work with that, we're clear, and they're okay with that hours-wise. They're okay with what we have inside the building, and we're going to be asking probably the mayor and the city manager for a letter short to give to Arizona Office of Tourism to ask for the office to be officially in place at our building, and then we'll be recognized on the website, the app, and get all the other benefits of that. And everything today, Tricia was on the call, and Angie was as well. Seems like that's going to be no problem. So we, like I said, be asking for that. And like I said, we're closed on Saturdays. You look at STIC numbers, 269. I've been in the chamber on the board for five years, and the average number each month was like 100 and something. So we are consistently staying in that. That's almost 300 in October. Traffic has slowed down a little bit. We were in the 400s the last three months. This is actually good, good feedback, and I think that goes a lot along with the people getting their telephone calls answered when they call in and having somebody that's friendly and nice in there every single day when they walk through the door. So any questions? Oh, one note, we are going to be decorating for Christmas. Don't worry about that.
Any comments, questions? Councilmember Leach?
Is your Saturdays for winter?
Yes.
Only?
Winter only.
That's only winter. And that's always, we've always done that, like in, right around Halloween.
But winter's not here yet, just so you know.
Well, I know. Winter, so off-season, we'll just call it off-season.
Any comments, questions to council? Thank you for your report. Appreciate it. Thanks for being here.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Next item we have is the consent calendar. Is there any items on the consent calendar that need to be pulled or discussed?
Mayor, I'd like to pull 7A, please.
7A and discuss it more, or pull it. You just want to
Just to discuss it.
Discuss it. Okay. All right. We'll go ahead and look for a motion to approve. The other item we have is consideration acceptance of amendment of the governor's office highway grant, consideration to approve and hire an additional full-time equivalent, and consideration of the minutes of November 3rd, 2020. Need a motion?
I'll move.
Yeah, the motions are second, second by councilmember Hatch. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Yeah, pass. Brad, you there?
I vote aye, your mayor.
Okay, thank you. See that pass, seven to zero. Next item, and then we'll go back to item 7A on the consent calendar, consideration of acceptance of the senior center kitchen expansion. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I just want to thank staff and everybody that got that grant together for the Meals and Wheels Senior Center to enlarge that kitchen. It was a great addition to that. If anybody's ever been up there and seen it, it increased to about 400 square feet. We had three or four more new freezers in there, some refrigerators, and a lot more storage room for food, too, for the seniors and for Meals and Wheels. So thank you very much for your completion of that, and thank you for getting that pushed along as fast as you did. Thank you.
Anything else on that? I'll look for a motion to approve item 7A of the consent calendar. We have a motion by councilmember Leach, seconded by council vice mayor. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? See that pass, seven to zero. Thank you. Next item we have is item 8A, public hearing, consideration of appeal of conditional use permit, 60204232 submitted by Young Design Group on behalf of Verizon Wireless. I just want to make a note here that for this public hearing, due to COVID-19, we're allowing citizens to call in to participate in the November 17 public hearing. If you'd like to speak during the public hearing regarding the appeal on the conditional use permit, you may call in at 928-207-8109 during the public hearing portion. Leave your name and number, and staff will return that call. We ask for those people who call in that this applies that you live in the city of Cholo and that this pertains to that item only. Okay? And so at this time, I'll turn the time to Justin Tregaskis here.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I do have a staff report that I will be presenting. Additionally, there are a few slides that I'll be going through. The purpose essentially is to review background information, perhaps answer some questions upfront. Following my presentation, myself, as well as the applicant, will be available for questions.
Can I just interject here a little bit, if I can, before you start? I just want the public to know that as we go through this, things that are mentioned in this slide are already talked about or brought up. Please make note of that, if that's something that you wanted to talk about, because if it's already been discussed or addressed, we want to limit the new items or new discussion or new topics that may be different than what we've already seen or heard. So kind of watch and listen as we go through here so that we don't repeat ourselves redundantly, because we've had a lot of time to review this as staff has, as well as council. And so we've asked them to prepare this to kind of give a thorough overview and understanding of where we're at tonight. Thank you.
Mayor, as a reminder, this has been scheduled for a public hearing. Following the public hearing, the council will have three options, essentially to uphold the commission decision as is. You can uphold the commission decision and modify the conditions of approval, or you can overturn the commission decision and deny the conditional use permit. If you choose to deny the conditional use permit, any motion must state the reasons for doing so. That's based on city code as well as FCC federal law requirements. With that, I'll go ahead and start the staff report. On September 22nd of 2020, the Planning and Zoning Commission met to discuss conditional use permit 60204232 submitted by Young Design Group on behalf of Verizon Wireless to allow for a 110-foot monopine cell tower located at 591 North Clark Road, 3980 West Cooley, that being AP number 30952027B. Six commission members were present. Commissioner Best was absent. During this meeting, two motions to approve were made. Neither motion received a majority vote. No motion to deny was ever made by the commission. In accordance with local, state, and federal requirements, any motion to deny must state the reasons for doing so. Following approximately two hours of discussion and public input, the commission voted to continue this item to the October 13th meeting to allow for a full commission to be present. At its regular meeting of October 13th, the commission heard additional information presented by staff and the applicant, as well as additional public input from concerned area property owners. According to the site plan, the existing trees in the vicinity of the proposed tower are approximately 60, 62, 68, 72, and 73 feet tall. The applicant is proposing a 110-foot tall monopine tower, which would be approximately 40 feet taller than the surrounding trees. The applicant has provided a picture of an actual installation of one of their monopine towers. This was attached with the council's packet for review. For reference, the two most recently approved towers in the city were 80 feet tall. City Code Section 15169G2D1 states, quote, "Towers must be set back a distance equal to 125% of the height of the tower from any adjoining lot line, but may be reduced by the commission if the goals of this ordinance would be better served thereby. Based on this requirement, the setback for a 110-foot tower would be 137.5 feet from all property line. The applicant has proposed the following setbacks: 93.8 feet to the north, 200.8 feet to the east, 158 feet to the south, and 124.7 feet to the west. Due to the dimensions of the property, it is impossible to place the tower outside of the 200-foot visual corridor protection area and meet the 137.5-foot setback from all property line." Also, City Code Section 15169G2E1 states, quote, "Separation from all residentially zoned property shall be a minimum of 200 feet, but may be reduced by the commission if the goals of this ordinance would be better served thereby," end quote. "To meet the 200-foot roadway visual corridor protection area, the tower will only be set back 124.7 feet from the residentially zoned properties to the west of the subject property." Per City Code, commission may grant an allowance to reduce the fall zone and separation from residentially zoned property requirements, provided, quote, "The goals of this ordinance would be better served thereby." Per City Code, Section 15169A, the goals of the ordinance are to one, protect residential areas and land uses from potential adverse impacts of towers and antennas; two, encourage the location of towers in non-residential areas; three, minimize the total number of towers throughout the community; four, strongly encourage the joint use of new and existing tower sites as a primary option rather than construction of additional single-use towers; five, encourage users of towers and antennas to configure them in a way that minimizes the adverse visual impact of the towers and antennas through careful design, siding, landscape screening, and innovative camouflaging techniques; six, consider the public health and safety of communication towers; seven, avoid potential damage to adjacent properties from tower failure through engineering and careful guarding of tower structures; and eight, protect airport approach corridors. The applicant has not requested a variance, but a reduction to the setbacks from a residential zone and the 125% fall zone setback along the north property line. This request is permitted by City Code and is not a variance. Only the Board of Adjustment can approve a variance to City Code. The applicant has requested that Planning and Zoning Commission allow a 75.3-foot reduction to the 200-foot setback from a residential zone, which would be 124.7 feet. The applicant is also requesting a 43.7-foot reduction of the 137.5-foot setback to the north property line, which would be 93.8 feet. Reductions to these setbacks are allowed by code if the commission feels that the goals of the ordinance would be better served by the decision. Property was posted, and letters were sent to all property owners within 300 foot of the subject property. I would add that those letters were sent to the addresses on file with Navajo County. Prior to the last meeting, staff received a phone call and email from a resident identifying himself as a representative of Fairway Park Homeowners Association. He expressed concerns of visual aesthetics, health effects, climbing property values due to the proposed tower. An email from this individual has been attached for your review. At the regularly scheduled Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of September 22nd, 2020, several neighboring property owners spoke in opposition to the proposed tower. Also, several neighbors located within 300 foot of the property indicated that they had not received notice of the meeting. Staff, city staff mailed letters to all property owners within 300 feet of the subject property using the mailing addresses obtained from Navajo County tax record. In addition, public notice signs were posted on the subject property off both West Cooley and North Clark Road. City Code Section 15133F regarding notification requirements state, quote, "Notice of the nature of the conditional use permit application and the date of the meeting at which it will be considered shall be posted on the property and shall be mailed to the owners of all real property within 300 feet of the property for which the application was made, at least 10 days prior to the meeting. Notwithstanding the notice requirement set forth in this section, the failure of any person or entity to receive notice shall not constitute grounds for any court to invalidate the action which the notice was given." This item was originally heard by the commission at the regular meeting of September 22nd, 2020. A number of property owners spoke in opposition to the proposed project. Concerns included health issues, impacts to property values, the reduction in the residential setback, clearing of trees, and safety. Residents also questioned the need for this specific site and suggested other locations might be better suited. Two motions to approve the request were made, with both motions failing. No motion was made to deny the application. The commission then continued this item from the September 22nd, 2020 meeting to October 13th, 2020, in order to allow for a full commission to be present. Since the September meeting, staff has received multiple emails and letters from nearby property owners in opposition to proposed monopine tower. These letters and emails are attached for your review. With that, I will go ahead and go through the few slides here for you, again, in interest of providing background information. You can see there, that's the timeline. The application was originally received August 25th of 2020. We had three meetings, September 22nd, October 13th, at which the item was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. This item was then appealed. The city council held a meeting October 20th, at which time you directed staff to schedule this for a public hearing, which is why we're here this evening. At the September 22nd, 2020 meeting, there were two motions made to approve. Neither received the votes necessary to pass. There was no motion to deny. I'll point out again that City Code and federal law require a motion to deny with reason stated for doing so for a cell tower. This was continued to October 13th, and we had quite a bit of public deliberation at that first meeting. October 13th, we had a full commission present. No motion to deny was made. The motion did pass, or the item did pass, subject to commission recommendations by a vote of four to three. And again, quite a bit of public testimony and input was taken at that meeting. I'll point out applicable code sections. Section 15132 governs conditional use permits. Section 15169 governs wireless telecommunications towers and antennas. Those are the two portions of City Code that are relevant to this discussion. Section 15131, which is entitled Text Amendment and Zone Changes, does not apply, as this is not a zone change. Also, Section 15135, Appeals and Variances, does not apply, as this is not a variance. Variances are only heard by the Board of Adjustment, not Planning and Zoning Commission, or the city council. As stated in City Code, we have what we call informally the fall zone. Essentially, that's if the tower were to fail at the base and fall like a tree. That would be the fall zone. City Code requires 125% of the height for a fall zone. However, Section 15159G2D states, "Towers must be set back a distance equal to at least 125% of the height of the tower from any adjoining lot line, but may be reduced by the commission if the goals of this ordinance would be better served thereby." You'll notice the bold and underline, that's emphasis that I added there. Reduction by the commission is permitted by code and is not a variance, and it's not a violation of City Code. The same thing as far as setbacks from residentially zoned properties. Code reads separation Uh, code reads separation from all residentially zoned properties shall be a minimum of two hundred feet. Again, but may be reduced by the commission if the goals of this ordinance would be better served thereby. Uh, again, reduction by the commission is permitted by code and is not a variance or a violation of city code. The goals of the ordinance are spelled out in section fifteen-one-sixty-nine A. Uh, those are listed below. First is to protect residential areas and land uses from potentially adverse impacts of towers and antennas. I would point out that this is commercially zoned property. Uh, there's commercial property on the north, there's commercial property on the south, there's commercial property to the east. The property to the west is zoned, uh, residential. It previously was zoned commercial, uh, but went through a zone change in two thousand and seven to allow for those lots to be developed as a residential lot. Uh, the, uh, lot owned by Ms. Cash, uh, is one of those lots that went through that zone change. Um, goal number two, encourage the location of towers in non-residential areas. Again, this is commercially zoned property. Uh, minimize the total number of towers throughout the community. The applicant has indicated that this tower will be designed in such a way that additional, uh, locators could be on the tower, uh, thereby reducing the potential number of towers in the future. Strongly encourage the joint use of new and existing tower sites as a primary option rather than construction of additional single-use towers. Again, this is being designed as a multi-use tower. Uh, goals continued encourage users of towers and antennas to configure them in a way that minimizes the adverse visual impact of towers and antennas through careful design, sighting, landscape screening and innovative camouflaging techniques. Uh, the applicant has indicated that this will be a monopine type tower. Uh, and there are other pine trees in the area that this would be, uh, located nearby or around. Uh, this tower is proposed to be a hundred and ten feet tall. The adjacent pine trees are approximately tallest about seventy feet tall. Uh, but rather than go with a lattice type tower, uh, or a pole type tower, they are proposing a monopine. Consider the public health and safety of communication towers. Uh, the base of the tower, the footprint will be fenced, uh, to prohibit the, uh, trespass of people there by the tower. Also, they have indicated that they will not exceed the FCC health, uh, regulations as far as emissions from the tower. And finally, protect airport approach corridors. Uh, they have filed an FAA Form seventy-four sixty. Uh, that is, uh, primarily the form that the Federal Aviation Administration looks at to determine whether the location of a tower is a hazard to air navigation. The FAA came back with a determination of no hazard. Uh, and this tower is not proposed to be lit. Uh, October twentieth, city council meeting, again, uh, quite a bit of public testimony and deliberation. And, uh, you guys voted to schedule this for a public hearing for this evening. Concerns that were brought forth, uh, potential health effects, impacts on property values, safety issues, uh, other possible locations, reduction of setbacks and aesthetics. Uh, brief recap of options for tonight. This is a, a public hearing. Council may, after the public hearing, termen to uphold the commission decision with no changes to the conditions of approval. Uphold the commission decision and modify the conditions of approval. Overturn the commission decision and deny the conditional use permit. Any motion to deny must state the reasons for doing so. And the council's decision shall be final and shall be effective immediately. Uh, as a review, the commission decision were these five items. Number one, all development shall comply with all applicable federal, state and local requirements, including FCC or Federal Communications Commission, the Federal Aviation Administration or FAA and building permit requirement. Number two, the antenna and supporting structure shall not exceed one hundred and ten feet. No addition to the height of the tower shall be permitted. Number three, the tower shall be in substantial conformance with the submitted site plan and submitted determination of no hazard to air navigation. Number four, a maintenance plan for the tower shall be submitted to the planning and zoning department. The tower shall be maintained in accordance with this plan. And finally, as indicated by the applicant, no generator shall be utilized. With that, uh, staff is available for questions. The applicant is also present, uh, and is available for questions or to prevent or to, uh, add additional information.
Thank you. Appreciate that summary. This time, is there any questions at this point? Uh, that's woman Kukavas.
Thank you. That was a lot of reading. I apologize.
Justin, you talked about the original zoning was commercial and then it was rezoned to C two, is that correct? To allow for the residential in the back?
Um, let me zoom in here on subject property map. Um, so you can see on the map in front of you, uh, the subject property has the thirty-nine eighty right in the middle of it. That property is zoned C two. That is the original zoning for this property. It dates back to nineteen seventy-six or so, whenever zoning became effective in the city of Sholo. Properties directly to the west, which are labeled as five sixty-one, five forty-one, five twenty-one and five zero-one. Those also were originally zoned commercial. They were originally zoned C two. At the request of the property owner in two thousand and seven, those four properties were re-zoned from commercial to residential. Uh, so that's why you see that yellow line cutting in between the two. Uh, that's to designate the boundary between the residential and the commercial. But originally, those four properties were commercially zoned property.
Explain what thirty-nine-twenty is that jog out?
Thirty-nine-twenty is an entirely separate piece of property and is not part of, uh, the consideration this evening. Um, it, uh, it's an interesting piece of property. We envision at some point it will probably be combined with thirty-nine eighty in order to promote development between the two properties, but at this point it's a separate individual piece of property. Uh, it is also zoned commercial.
Any other questions?
The other little triangle. Or not triangle.
Uh, the little rectangle there in the center.
To extend the conference for fifteen minutes, press one.
We may be extending it more than just fifteen minutes, I think. Um, again, that's just a, uh, we're not sure what that parcel represents. Um, it just shows up on the parcel maps, so.
But a separate parcel?
It doesn't show up as a separate parcel number or anything like that. Um, again, it, I think it's just a holdover from back in the day as far as that goes.
Uh, council member Leach.
Justin, can you show us with your pointer exactly where this tower is? It's not on this map, right? I mean, we walked, I walked out there and where's it actually going to be located with your?
So this is a city aerial. This is not provided by the applicant. Uh, the area for the proposed tower is approximately where this C two is shown on the map. So kind of that northwest corner, but inset, uh, from the residential and inset from the commercial line to the, to the north.
That's woman Kukavas.
Leasing this property and are they leasing the entire thirty-nine eighty?
Uh, it's our understanding that they are leasing the portion of the property that the tower and the related equipment will be on, uh, which is just about a twenty by thirty footprint. Uh, the remainder of the property would be just under the existing ownership.
So there could be other development?
Yes.
I, real quick, I, I guess just to clarify, I know a lot of us were on planning and zoning, so C two. I mean, we could put a motel there. We could put, there's just a lot of things that could go there that I don't know would make it look any better, especially for the people that have homes back there on, on the five sixty-one to five oh-one, but in all reality, we can put a forty-story motel there if it, because of the C two, correct?
Well, the property is zoned C two. Uh, there are a number of permitted and conditional uses that are associated with that. Uh, maximum building height, um, is on commercially on C two zone property is forty-five feet. Uh, you would need to match whatever the, the height of the building, you would need to be that far away from the property line. So as an example, if they were to put in a forty-five foot tall, a hotel on that property, it would need to be forty-five feet from the property line. That doesn't preclude things like parking lots, loading zones, uh, trash dumpsters, things like that. Uh, those could be located between the building and the property line. Uh, as far as uses go on that property, I mean, if you drive up and down the Deuce of Clubs, that's primarily C two property. Uh, any of those types of uses could, uh, be put onto this property.
Council member Kelly.
Now that prompts a question to me. If the tower is allowed, how does that prohibit any of the other development or does?
It would not prohibit any of the other development. Obviously, they would need to take that into account as they develop the site. So potentially you could have the tower plus a building on this property.
Okay.
Potentially, or any of the other uses, yes.
I guess my question, if we were to approve this and reduce the fall, uh, zone or the fall distance, would that apply to somebody building, a new building on C two? They would be able to be closer to that tower than the code or would they have to come for a conditional permit to be able to have the same reduction from that structure?
The, the fall zones are measured to property lines. Um, in this case, the, the property is remaining intact. The tower, uh, is leasing just a portion of that property. So the tower and the future potential building, we would not require that they be, meet the fall zone between themselves. We would not require that the tower and the building meet that same fall zone that we're requiring for the property lines to the north and to the west.
Well, in the future, then somebody could build a, a building right next to that tower within ten feet.
Uh, fairly close, yes.
Any other questions at this time? Councilwoman Kukavas.
Is that the only portion of the property that's available to the applicant?
There are other portions of the property that are available. Um, as we discussed with the commission, the major limiting factor on this property is there is a two hundred foot visual corridor buffer along any of our major roadways. Um, that is not one of those buffers that's allowed to be adjusted by the commission. Uh, the fall zone and the separation to residential, we have the wording in that says may be reduced by the commission. The two hundred foot visual corridor does not have that same wording. Um, the commission does not have the ability to reduce that. When you look at the site plan, um, in fact, let me just kind of skip to it a little bit here. Um, this shows it a little bit. You can see the property line along what would be the northeast side of the property running along Clark Road. This line right here is the line that parallels that property line at two hundred feet. They're proposing to be set back two hundred point seven feet from the roadway. So they have pushed that as close to the roadway as they can. Um, and still meet the two hundred foot. As you move to the south, that two hundred foot, um, gets you a little bit further away from these residentials. But now you're getting into the setback from Cooley Road. So, um, it, it's really, it, it's not possible to move this site on the property and meet the three setbacks without a reduction that was made by the commission.
Bye, Smear.
Justin, I guess I have a question then of, um, you went through fifteen dot one dot five nine. Um, you have your setbacks. We have, we have setbacks already set in place. And commission is one to go ahead and change those setbacks. If I'm hearing everything right, to fit the tower in. So far, am I correct or am I blowing smoke?
So the, the applicant requested the reduction in setbacks. The commission allowed that reduction based on the section of code, yes.
And then you, then according to you, according to our code, it's legal for us to change the setback. Is that correct?
The code allows for the commission to reduce the fall zone setback and the setback to residentially zoned property, which they did in this case.
And then that just, but if, if the commission didn't do that, then the dang thing couldn't fit in there then. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
And if we try to change those, if we try to change them back, then we're changing what the commission did, which is that, that goes against them. But so theoretically, what we have in our code, we change it to modify to make this thing where, where it would try to fit on there.
That is correct. If the council feels that the reduction in setbacks made by the commission uh, was not appropriate and that those setbacks should remain as, uh, written in code with no reduction, then the council would need to overturn the commission decision and deny the conditional use permit uh, and state the reasons why you are doing so.
Yeah, thank you.
Are they maximizing the reduction a hundred percent of what they're allowed to do or, or just a portion?
So the, the reduction, I mean, you saw in the presentation, there is no limit as to how much the commission can reduce those. Technically, the commission, if they felt the need, could reduce them to zero foot. Uh, in this case, the applicant came and said, look, we've pushed it as far towards the road as we can. Um, we're asking for reduction to the north and we're asking for a reduction to the west. And the commission did grant those, uh, that request.
Can you share with us what, how many feet they're reducing that to the north and to the west?
Um, yeah, I had it in my staff report. Um, so to the north, they're supposed to be, I think, a hundred and thirty-seven and they are at ninety-three point eight. So that's forty-three feet, give or take. To the west, they're supposed to be two hundred. Um, and when I say supposed to be, that's the established by code, but it can be reduced. Um, the initial number established by code is two hundred. They're at one twenty-four point seven, so seventy-five point three.
Thank you for that clarification. Appreciate it. Councilwoman Kukavas.
On the north property line, that, that is commercial property connecting with this property.
Correct. Um, I'll back up to the aerial that shows the area. The property to the north is, uh, the Dollar General property. Um, I'll go back a little bit more. I've got a lot of slides here, so you're going to see me doing this a fair bit tonight. Um, so the property to the north, you can see the red line that divides, uh, the subject property to, uh, six fifty North Clark Road. That is the property line between the two. So the ninety-three feet takes you to the property line. Uh, then you've got parking lot, then you've got building. So when you're looking at the fall zone, it takes quite a bit before it will actually land on the structure to the north. Um, it, uh, it would land into the parking lot area first if it were to fa- fail within its entirety. We have received documentation from the applicant regarding their engineering, uh, that this is not designed to fail at the base, that it's designed to fail at the midpoint, uh, which would result if that were to happen, uh, in about a sixty-five, fifty-five foot fall rather than a hundred and ten foot fall. So, um, that, that is some information that we've received.
Justin, there's a large power line on the back of this property. Can you point that out for us?
Um, so the power line essentially runs, you can see a shadow right here. That's the power pole. You can see a shadow right here. That's the power pole. Um, so the power line connects there. Um, I believe there's also a power pole here. Uh, you can see a shadow. Um, so again, then it runs to the north at that point. So along the property line, it appears to be, is where it runs, which is again, a hundred and twenty feet or so from the proposed tower location.
Are you proposing to cut down any trees on that site?
They are not proposing to cut down any trees. Um, the site plan indicates that no trees will be removed. Um, they have located They have located this in a location where no trees are required to be taken out in order to allow for the installation. You'll also notice that one of the commission decision is that they have substantial compliance with the submitted site plan. The site plan indicates that no trees will be removed. Some substantial conformance would mean you're not taking out any trees with this.
You know, I'm not sure if this question could be for you or for the applicant, but the tower is a hundred and ten. If they're going to use the camouflage for the make it a look like a tree, is that going to stick above the hundred and ten foot level?
So the maximum height from ground to the very top is a hundred and ten feet. So the pine tree will not go any higher than a hundred and ten feet. The antenna itself at the center line is actually ninety five feet. And then a portion of the antenna extends up to a hundred feet. Then they add an additional ten foot of topper at the top of that, just to kind of give it a little bit more shape so that you're not squaring it off. So maximum height of this would be a hundred and ten feet, including all pine tree camouflage type accessories.
Councilmember Leach.
I guess now that he brought that up, the quick comment I got is I've, you know, I've seen these all over the place, Flagstaff, obviously Scottsdale's got a bunch of them. The part that really bothers me as far as the way it looks is the fence. I mean, you see these everywhere and I would never recognize these towers anywhere. I mean, I was sitting at a restaurant in Flagstaff and I seen this guy climbing a tree. Well, it was one of those towers and so I looked more and what gave it away was the fencing around it. If anything looks ugly around these is the fencing because, and I know they have to have it, but if there was any way to camouflage that fencing where it kind of blended in would make more sense to me because I don't think anybody could drive into this town, even if it's, I don't know how many feet above the trees that are out there. I'm not sure because you go out in the forest and there would be one tree all by itself that's taller than any other one. So that one doesn't really bother me as much as the fencing. I think if that fencing around it somehow was camouflaged into that, people come in this community and probably would never know.
To extend the conference for fifteen minutes, press one.
Nobody would ever notice that that was a tower to me. And once you look at it more and you get up closer, yeah, maybe, but if you're driving by, I think the part to me that looks ugly is the fencing. And I know wrought iron fencing, it's a beautiful fencing, but it highlights the tower to me. So that's kind of the only way that I know it's a tower. And as far as the looks of it, I don't know. They look fine to me, I just don't like that.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Justin, did they give you a life expectancy of what, how long this stuff will last before they have to change it out?
They did not, no. One of the requirements as passed by the commission is that they give us a maintenance plan. We haven't received that yet because we don't have final approval that this is actually going through.
Thank you.
So they would have to give us that as part of this process.
This time I'm going to ask the applicant if they would come up and just share any information. I know at our last meeting, we talked about other locations, possibly if you could weigh in a little bit on the other proposed locations that were shared by the neighborhood as well as why you need this tower. And I really want to hear from you, your opinion as to how many people in the community that you think that this tower will benefit as a whole, not just as, you know, you don't have to be exact, I'm not going to take a poll, but is it only going to benefit a fraction of our our community or share with us what the potential, you know, good is to the community for this?
Thank you, Mayor. I spoke with the fire chief Savage today and Troy Maloney, who used to be on the fire department here, and they both gave me quite a few talking points as to why and how this is going to help the community. Chief Savage said that the data capacity right now, which is the true issue for this site, is affecting their ability to service the community as a whole. He said every weekend, the systems are getting overloaded. Call volumes average sixty two hundred calls a month. Full time residents in the area are thirty five thousand. When you get your seasonal visitors, you add fifteen to twenty thousand and sometimes more for that number of users. Calls have been bumped to the county, Navajo County, before reaching them, which he feels is a safety issue for everyone in general. Hold on. They said the nine one one system is extremely dependent on making sure the calls for emergency service get routed to the appropriate nine one one dispatch center. Having nine one one callers get transferred between dispatch centers delays responses and could lead to a case of death. All of our fire and rescue apparatuses are equipped with computers that use the mobile data that are linked to the nine one one dispatch center called the computer aided dispatching, where emergency incidents are received and set out from. These computers are dependent on the system that Verizon Wireless actually uses for their data. And they are, they are actually on the Verizon Wireless system, they confirmed. Says the dispatch system is who the emergency responders receive their vital incident and patient information from, how they receive their mapping to go to the location of the incident. And when the cellular system does not operate correctly, our mapping system goes down, thus having to rely on paper maps that are hard to keep up to date and dangerous to read while operating the vehicle. It says all of our computers and their cardiac heart monitors operate off of the cellular signals that require a strong cell signal and data capacity to receive and transmit data. The data from their heart monitors needs to be transmitted and received by the hospital for medical direction and oversight and instant interaction between the doctors and field medics. So that's the information they gave us on how this helps the community as a whole. It's not just going to help this small little area. It actually offloads the other two towers, which are at capacity at this point. He can tell you more about that part. That's what he is here for.
So you gave them justification, right? Did you get this one? Okay. Justin, you might have some of the slides he's looking for, right?
No.
No, these are new ones?
These are, since our last meeting, we did an awful lot of research.
Is there a way we can try, okay? So your question was how, what part of the community is it going to affect? It's going to affect the area where the site's going. I don't know the exact amount of houses, but probably within a mile in diameter. There we go, there's an RF nine, there's one more called RF justification. And bring. Yeah, okay, all right. So just an overview, it's a hundred and ten foot monopine, pretty standard stuff. Verizon's at ninety five foot center line, so that's the center of the antenna. The antenna is going to be about eight foot tall, so the antenna's tip will be at ninety nine, but below the top of the tower. Wireless utilization, just a fun fact, eighty two percent of all mobile data traffic will be video traffic by 2021. Video is very, 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 takes a lot of horsepower to get video through a wireless network and it's a lot of capacity. Fifty seven percent of homes rely exclusively on cell phones and eighty percent calls for nine one one are placed on wireless devices. The fifty seven percent is going to be up or the utilization's up because of COVID. A lot of people working from home, everybody understands that, pretty standard stuff. The objective of the new site is capacity. So a segue look at capacity. Capacity is the amount of calls or the amount of traffic handled by a site. You have two sites in Sholo, you have the site on the east and the site on the northwest. Those sites have been providing capacity and coverage. Call that the Thanksgiving principle. If you have a capacity, so let's say you're at home with your significant other, you have a Wi Fi access point, you're having Wi Fi service at home, you have coverage in certain rooms, you have capacity, you can go to a certain room and stream Netflix, you can surf the web, you can do emails, pretty standard with two people. It's a, it's a radio channel, finite resource. There's two people talking on that radio channel, using that channel. Now the Thanksgiving show, everybody shows up for Thanksgiving dinner, what's first thing everybody asks? Hey, what's your Wi Fi password? Standard stuff. Everybody climbs on, now there's not two users, there's ten users, twenty users. There can be multiple streaming video runs, there can be all sorts of things happening. All of a sudden, maybe in this room, you don't get quite as good a coverage you used to get. Signal bars went down, maybe you start to slow down, you can't stream the site, it starts buffering. That's where we get into a capacity environment. A radio channel is like, it's like a water hose. If one person is drinking from the water hose, they have a hundred percent of the capacity. If two people drink from the water hose, they both have fifty percent. If four people drink from the same hose, they all have twenty five percent, goes down. Water hose is going to send a certain amount of gallons per minute, just like a radio channel is going to have a certain amount of bandwidth. All the users share that bandwidth, so they're all drinking from the same water hose. So the objective is to offload the capacity from AZ three Dusa clubs, which is the site on the east side of town. And then it's really basically just two sectors. It's the alpha sector, the sector facing a little bit north, and then the gamma sector facing west. Those are both, that site's overloaded, it's overwhelmed. There's a lot of people using it and it's, it's busy, it's very busy. The second thing it's going to provide is coverage. Typically, capacity is pretty much all we're looking for is just to try to, try to help offload that site, that AZ three Dusa clubs on the east side. The second part of it, the nice part, is you're going to get some additional coverage. Now that you have a transmitter that's closer to the people, closer to where the, all the users are within this general area, now they're going to be able to have coverage inside their house where they didn't get to have coverage inside their house before. Just like with your Wi Fi at your home, you have coverage good in one room and you don't have good in another room. Now you're going to have good coverage in the other room. So if we imagine the area this site's going to serve, let's say it's like this room in here, okay? We're all standing in the room, we're all taking capacity, the fire marshal has a limit on how much people can be in this room. That's the capacity of the room. Same thing with the radio channel on the site, it has a capacity, right? This is all it can do, it can't do anymore. The site to the east is out of capacity, it's trying to cover this room and all the other rooms surrounding it. It's not, it's not able to handle that, it needs some way to come in and offload. So the best thing to do is when you have a site that's got coverage and a capacity issue and you have another site that's covering down, you want to put a site in the middle that's on the cell edge, split the coverage up, split the capacity up from the site that's hurting and the other site. And then you have more coverage, you have more in building service, you have more capacity. So you've got better throughput, you don't buffer on the Netflix, you don't, you know, your emails come in on time. When you surf the web, it doesn't get really, really, really slow. Those are the things that impact capacity within this area. So look at it like it's just a bunch of rooms, a bunch of areas that have to be covered and there's a limited resource to use that. So we'll get coverage on Linden Road, Hawthorne Road, surrounding suburban areas, also help a lot on Highway two sixty. Okay, so if we look at the area, the on air site, this is the Shohei site up on the northwest side of town. We have the Dusa club site down on the east side of town. AZ three Parsons proposed site is a split between this site and this site. But the capacity issue is this site. So we want to offload this guy by getting all of the customers that are in this area instead of being served by this guy to be served by this guy. But we also want to bridge the coverage over to Shohei and help offload him as well. The primary concern is AZ three Dusa clubs. Now. Wait, slow down a minute. I have a quick question, if you don't mind, Mayor. You, you keep going sites, this one to this one, but in reality, how, how far are you talking? As far as coverage is, I know you're pointing to this one goes to this one, that one goes to that one, but what are you talking about distance wise? How, how much coverage? So if you look, if you look at AZ three Parsons, it's probably going to cover three quarters a mile to a mile in diameter around that site. It's going to be able to provide assistance to people to the southwest a mile away, to the east a mile away. So you're getting more coverage in this area around the, a lot of the golf courses and the area, the houses around this area. But it's also providing where we get a little bit of in building problems up in this area to the east of where the proposed site is, it's going to help with coverage in that area as well. If you draw a diameter circle, and I'll show you on some plots here in a moment, what that means. If you look at it like, so there's some alternative sites that I'm going to review. Councilman Hatch was very specific in what he wanted to see and understand. Think of, go back to the room scenario, we're all in the room. Okay, let's say it's a cocktail party. We're all having a good time, we're sitting, we're chatting. Mr. Mayor, you're on the east side of town and you're about a block over and you're trying to talk to everybody within this area, right? So you're farther away, you're having to raise your voice so you can be heard and you're sharing information with people in this room, but you're two blocks away. Same thing with AZ, AZ three Shohei. Councilman Hatch is on the northwest side of town and he's two or three blocks away from this room. And you're both are talking very loudly, try to talk to the people in this room. Well, you have to talk really loud and the people talking back to you have to talk really loud. And there's a lot of people in this room, in this area, being served by you and the councilman. So what we do is we try to bring another person to talk or another announcer. Instead of placing another announcer two tenths of a mile from you, Mr. Mayor, or two tenths of a mile from you, Councilman Hatch, we try to put another person talking in the middle of where the people are. And that's what's going on with this proposed site. We're trying to, we're trying to add coverage and capacity in the area that's needed, in the area that's serving the people. Putting a site around on the outside and adding another person standing far away from the area and talking and trying to talk to the people in this room, it's just going to be another loudspeaker. It's going to be another person, everybody's going to have to change their voice and get real loud and talk. Best way to, to say that is if I'm talking my compatriot here, we're next to each other. We hear each other really well, we communicate, we understand what each other is saying. But if she's a block away, standing by Councilman Hatch, she has to talk really loud, I'm not going to be able to hear her as well. So we try to get the site where customers are.
I had a question, Mayor. We're at this site here that you're looking at doing, I think the radius of you picking up cell sites.
You still there, Brown?
You better be.
Yes, I'm here, Mayor, thank you.
We're just making sure that you're within our distance here, we're talking distances now, so. I want to make sure you're paying attention.
So the, the radius around the site that you're trying to put in, the frequencies that you're sending out and receiving, can you tell me the people that live right next to that five, that five oh one, five twenty one, five forty one, sixty one, is there reception and, and stuff for their high speed internet or any of that stuff? Is that going to be any better than what it is right now or is it going to be better in your bands outside?
So it's going to be better in building inside, within probably a mile and a half. It's going to be better inside houses because there's going to be additional low band power that penetrates through walls better. And then the capacity wise, it's going to be in the mid band, it's going to be a lot more bandwidth, a lot more people can talk at the same time, utilize the data services in a smaller area.
So closer to the tower is going to be better service for them?
Yeah, closer to the tower.
Because of the stuff going through the walls and everything else?
The energy.
The further out, then you get the lower bandwidth you're going to get going out.
Yes, sir. It's, it's just like your access point in your house when your Wi Fi and you, you have your access point on one side of the house and you walk to the other side of the house, you'll know the signal bar on your laptop or on your phone lowers. Same concept. As you get farther away, the ability to utilize the bandwidth gets worse because you get more noise.
Okay, thank you.
System is, there's two other sites it's providing, so it makes a bridge. All right, so here's the two sites, the sectors that are being offloaded from Dusa clubs. And then this is the site to the north, Shohei site. So I give you three, three types of analysis on coverage analysis. One is, or two are generated by a propagation modeling. So that's a modeling tool that says, I'm going to put an antenna at a certain height, I'm going to put a frequency on it, and then I'm going to turn it on and propagate it and it's going to take into account trees, buildings, all sorts of things to show what the coverage is going to be like. It's going to take topography, everything. That's, that's RSRP and the best server plots and the open signal map. And, uh, the open signal maps, uh, whenever you load apps on your phone, sometimes you give permission to load the app and they load other software. And sometimes open signal is loaded on like, you have the Facebook app on your phone or other things. You've given permission for that app to read data from your phone and send it to servers in other areas. That's open signal. That's the crowdsourced data. So this is the open signal. So all these little squares are users that have this app loaded and at, at a particular time, they connected with the wireless network. Green is good. They had a good conversation. They had good quality. Red is they didn't. They didn't have a good conversation. They didn't have good quality. They didn't have good throughput, right? They had, uh, you know, lost signals, lost messages, dropped calls, uh, things buffered, things like that. So as you can see, if you look in the direct area, all the users that are, these are actually Verizon users that are reporting back to these servers. A lot of reds going on in this area, right? These are people not getting good signal or not getting good capacity.
I have another question, Mayor. Uh, okay, so another question then would be if, if these people around here are losing, uh, connections or buffering. Would it benefit the tower to be lower or higher?
Okay, so to, um, explain lower, lower or higher, that it's better for the tower to be higher because it has to bridge coverage to the other sites. And get these guys out on the edge, right? So, uh, think of it the same way. Why are you sitting on chairs up above the crowd? You have line of sight to the crowd. Crowd has line of sight to you. The higher the antennas, the more line of sight, the ability to see farther.
Because I see around here, what it is, is if we have a tower up on top of a ridge or a mountain, now we can get the distance that we need to compared to having it down in the valley where you're restricted to just that valley.
Yeah, that's why God put our eyes on our head and not on our knees. We can see a whole lot better. All right, so this gives you an idea of actual reported subscribers. These people have the, the phones. These are what's going on in the area. Hey, RSRP, it looks like Big Chief and Crayons went crazy. What it is, is this is, I'm going to take, the antennas, I'm going to put power on them at a certain frequency. I'm going to propagate them and they're going to cover a certain amount of area. Green is in-building. So with a 95% probability, users within that area, in the green area, they're going to be able to make a phone call or have a, a data session within a building or a house or whatever. If it's yellow, it's in your car, right? Cars made differently than your house. You've got windows in your car. You're driving around, less loss, right? The build, the energy can penetrate through the car better than it can the house. Red is open field. I'm outside, I'm outdoors, I'm at the park, I'm on the phone. That's what, that's what red means. So this is what's going on now, right? We have some areas where we don't get coverage. And once again, this is 95% probability. Are there times we're going to get coverage in some of these other areas? Yes. In a low capacity environment, when there's not many users on, 3 o'clock in the morning, you might get good data connection. It's just how the system works. Now, here's the new site, proposed coverage. We noticed the difference really quick, back and forth. There's the blue circle showing what this is going to impact. Here's the impact of the proposed site. Now, we have a much larger area showing in-building coverage. 95% probability is a whole lot bigger area. We've got good bridge from, on the, the, uh, vehicles going along 260 and into the back roads. As well as we've got, instead of it being no coverage in this area, we have at least open field coverage. We're offloading this site. We're taking customers that used to be served by this guy in this area, this area, all around. Now they're being served by the proposed site. So that's the difference impact. In-building coverage, green. In-vehicle coverage, yellow. Open field, red. Now, best server. Uh, Councilman Hatch will probably have a little bit more interest in this than anyone else. But basically, another, it's not another Big Chief and Crayons. This is what's going on with the existing sites. This takes us down to a very low level and says, okay, this guy right here, he's having to serve a really big area, right? He's doing a lot. He's having to take care. He's got pasty issues. And we can look within this area, probable site, there's a lot of mix back and forth. There's no dominant server. People are bouncing back and forth between the sites. They're, they're, they're talking very loudly. They're creating interference. They're not working as well. Now if we add the new site in, look what happens. Now we have three new sectors. We're offloading this site. We're fixing the capacity issue with this site. We're helping give the customers this site can serve a better quality conversation, a better quality data session. We're offloading a little bit of this site. And then we're generating a good dominant, strong server, serving the area where the proposed site is. Uh, let's see, so, uh, Councilman Hatch asked for a zoom in so he could see really closely what, what was being changed. So I zoomed into the area around, uh, the proposed site. This is a lot of the open field coverage, a lot of the in-vehicle, and then some of the indoor. And here's the same area with the new proposed site. So all of these houses, Mr. Mayor, you asked, who is this going to impact? If you look from here to here, it's pretty significant. There's going to be impact, the positive for a lot of houses and a lot of businesses within this area. They're only going to have in-building coverage where they used to not have.
Plus there'll be some impact of where you're offloading or downtown in places as well, right?
Yes, sir. Because AZ3 Dusa Clubs is, is out of gas. So once again, the zoom in for Councilman Hatch. Uh, this is the best server in the current area. So you can see the blue, the light blue, the dark blue, the red, uh, the kind of tan color. Um, it's all over the, it's all over the board. There, there, it's no real good dominant server. And you come in with the new site and it really splits up everything. So hopefully that is a good explanation, shows you what I was talking about, Councilman Hatch. Um, this is the, the site, uh, so what? Um, this was the justification package. This is a reasoning why. And once again, the reason for this site is capacity. AZ3 Dusa Clubs. And you know by the amount of people that have moved into the area and by, uh, what my compatriot said from the fire chief, it's busy. You, you've got a lot more utilization going on in the market. Now we can go back and, uh, look at, um, so looking at alternate candidates brought up by opposition. I made, uh, Nancy helped me with, uh, getting these plotted. So all of the sites in red were sites that were brought up by opposition. This is zoom out and I'll zoom in closer, uh, to give you a better picture. So a way to look at it is this right here is the AZ3. Blue is the existing sites. Dark blue is existing sites. Green is the proposed site. Any site in red is sites that were brought up by opposition. It's safe to say that if a site is outside of where the AZ3 Sho-Hi is or west of that site. That site probably is not going to provide any service or any help fix this area. So I didn't really study those sites because I know there's AZ3 Highway 260, uh, which is, I think, uh, south of Clay Springs that provides service in this area and towards Sholo area. And it doesn't do anything in Sholo. So taking that into account, I didn't look at sites to the west of the AZ3 Sho-Hi site. Uh, those, those aren't going to provide any level of service or help within this area. Now I'm going to zoom mid. This is a, a little closer zoom, showing, uh, Sho-Hi, uh, more detailed. So here's some of those sites to the west. Once again, anything west of Sho-Hi, uh, I don't think is going to provide any service, any help to what's going on in this area. And then there was, uh, two sites or the three sites that I, or four sites that I looked at, excuse me, the light blues. Uh, there was a couple of extra sites, um, brought up by opposition, one of which was already previously considered. Uh, Nancy can talk to that better. So when we talked about previously where Mr. Mayor and you and Councilman Hatch were two blocks away. You were east and he was northwest and this area of service that you were trying to serve was in this room. You're having to yell pretty, pretty loud. Well, now we take and add Councilman Leach over here at this commercial 1.7 acres and he's having to yell as loud to talk to this area as well. It's a simple way to look at. I'm sorry, but that's, that's what I could come up with. It's not really going to help cover this area and offload the users within this area. Um, so i-if I look at, at residential cul-de-sac lot, Bison Park, and I look at, uh, the 1.7 acres commercial and the previous site that was considered but didn't get, uh, wasn't able to get worked on. These sites, while they're going to offload Dusa Clubs, they're not going to help fix the area where all of the capacity is. They're not going to fix all those users I showed you from that open signal map that had red, right? So those sites aren't viable. Um, I have, uh, additional detail that I can share, um, that Councilman Hatch had asked for. Now we go to the other side. Let's look at the, the sites in light blue on the west side. They're going to do coverage or provide coverage and service in this area. But remember, the main reason for this site was to offload AZ3 Dusa Clubs. If they're farther away, they're just, uh, Vice Mayor Alsop. Now he's on the southwest side of town and he's yelling, trying to serve the same area. It's not really going to provide the level of service and the, the, the needs. It's not going to fix the needs in the area where things are going on. Once again, when we build a cell split, we try to split between the existing sites as much as possible. Get all of those users that are on cell edge, just like you're in the side room of the house that you don't have wifi. We're trying to capture those users. Get them off of the capacity site because the capacity site is having to yell, use a lot of power. Talk to these people. They're not getting good throughput. They're having to yell. They're getting worse battery life. So things are happening. That's why we're trying to get the site in the middle to take care and offload those sites. Uh, we look at the zoom in a little closer. So it gives you ideas. So here's Sho-Hi, here's Dusa Clubs, and here's AZ3 Parsons'. So if we look at any of the alternative sites in light blue that were brought up that I, that I looked at. This, uh, Joe Tank Road, uh, it's going to serve a lot of grasshoppers out to the west. That's really not what, you know, we want to serve. They don't really carry cellular phones. We want to serve the people inside. So what this site would do would mostly just be on the outside, not really covering what was going on in town within the area. We do sites up to the north. They're going to offload Sho-Hi, but he's not the one that's got problems. Dusa Clubs is the one that has problems. These sites here, they're going to be next to Dusa Clubs. They're going to be, you know, uh, Councilman Leach and Mr. Mayor, you're going to be both close to each other, trying to yell at the people in this room. Not going to work really well. You want to get in the middle where customers are. It's a simple way to look at it. When you build your house, do you build your bathroom a few miles away from your house? No. You build your bathroom where you're going to use it. People are using the phones in this area. This is the area that's going to help offload Dusa Clubs. It's going to provide additional services. We have information from the fire chief saying it's needed. He's having problems and he's a Verizon customer. All his, all his units are Verizon customers. Are there any questions? Yes, ma'am.
The biggest concerns that the community had was the safety, the radiation safety. And you explained that last time. Can you go into that?
Yes, ma'am.
Or so we can understand that better.
Okay. So, uh, commercial wireless carriers are all regulated by the FCC. The FCC has come up with a bulletin and, and levels for RF, uh, emissions that are allowable and are safe for humans. And when they came up with this level.
To extend the conference for 15 minutes.
Specific absorption rate. So it's watts per centimeter squared. It's the amount of energy that can be absorbed by the human body and it's safe. Well, they came up with that level. They figured it out, a whole bunch of people. ANSI, IEEE, NCRP, the Food and Drug Administration, the EPA, OSHA, the National Institute of Occupational Safety. All these groups got together and they figured out what that level was. But when they figured out that level, they lowered it by 10. And that's the occupational level. And they lowered it by 50. And that's the general public level. So all carriers have to follow OET 65. Carriers spend a lot of money on these networks. They spend a lot of money on these licenses. They are not going to mess up on something like that and risk losing those capital expenditures. This is very important to carriers. Anytime a site gets modified, it gets an antenna change, an amplifier change, uh, it gets a carrier add. We have to do a study. Anytime, anytime anything changes, it has to be studied. Another, another person goes on that site with more antennas, that has to be studied. Any change done to the antenna system has to be remodeled, studied to make sure it meets the FCC guidelines. So to give you an example of typical exposure levels. If you have a cell phone, right? Remember it's proximity based. We talked about this last time. Closer it is, right? The more it's going to give you. The cell phone is 50% of the general public limit. So right here, I'm getting 50%. That cell site with those antennas, it's 0.1% of the general public limit. Distance, I'm farther away from the antennas. The amount of energy at the antenna versus what's on the ground is 1,1000. Very small, very small. The energy goes out from the antennas. It doesn't stand there. It goes away. It tries to cover an area. That energy needs to spread. As it spreads, as I double the distance, cuts by the square. I keep doubling the distance, it gets smaller and smaller and smaller. So it's proximity based. The cell site, 0.1%. If you have a wifi router that's actually generating 0.13, you have a baby monitor, that's one. If you have a cordless phone at home, that's one, uh, 15. If you have an FM radio transmitter close to you, that's 100. If you have a police and mobile radio that's our policeman carrying, those are going to generate even more because they're running on a higher power level. These mobiles and the systems are designed to power down. We talked about Mr. Mayor getting loud, the Councilman Hatch getting loud, talking. They're having to up their amplification. They're having to talk louder to these mobiles that are out on cell edge. Well, we want the mobiles to be talking quietly. We don't want to use the power. If a mobile's talking loudly, it's noisy. If it's noisy, it's a cocktail party. So same thing cocktail, cocktail party. Two people are in there, pretty quiet. You have a conversation one-on-one, can understand each other. 100 people are in there, you got to start talking louder so you can hear the person next to you. Same thing happens in a cellular network. But the mobiles try to stay low-power. The system wants the mobiles to be powered low, as low as possible. Because the higher the power, the more is, uh, an interferer. So there's two types of energy, radio waves. There's ionizing and non-ionizing. Ionizing, gamma rays, X-rays, ultraviolet. These are photons. So you go to the dentist, you sit down in the chair, you get the lead-over coat, right? The hygienist walks out of the room, hits the button, you get X-rayed. Why do they do that? Photons are passing through your body. That's not something that's good. That messes with your DNA. That's ionizing energy. That is not a radio trans- A radio transmitter is non-ionizing, like a light bulb. All the side effect is on a radio transmitter is heat. You ever notice when you're talking on the phone for a while, it's warm? That's because it's having to generate the radio energy and it's generating a side effect heat. Same thing happens at the antenna. So, uh, waves that don't affect T-U and DNA. Car radios, television, wifi access points, Bluetooth headsets, cell phones, light bulbs, wireless baby monitors, EV remotes. That's, that's all something that's okay. So if you absorb 50% of the public limit with your smartphone next to your ear versus maybe 5% at maximum of the public limit when that transmitter's active on a cell site. So you're, you're not getting very much energy because it's, the antennas are higher up in the air. So the only established side effect of cell phone radio waves is heat. Um, the FCC limits, ensure the amount of heat being generated close to individuals within the tolerance required, watts per centimeter squared. And that's what's going on. The two groups are general, public and occupational. Occupational is you have a hotel, there's air conditioners on the hotel. There's antennas on top of the hotel. Air conditioner guy goes up, looks at the antennas, doesn't really understand antennas. He's not a radio guy. He's up there to fix the air conditioner. He doesn't know, he doesn't need to stay close to the antenna. Barriers are put up. Signs are put up. Rings are put up. It's a controlled environment. That's occupational. When we look at occupational, it's just, uh, it's just controlled. The exposure levels are averaged over six minutes. So you can, you can be close, but it's done in such a way that there's barriers and signs that, hey, don't go here unless you are a radio guy and you understand how to work on this equipment. You can call and get equipment turned down. The second group is general public. You're walking by an antenna, you have no idea you're walking by an antenna. No idea. Uh, I was at a hearing in South Carolina. There was a antenna right in the middle of the room. Nobody knew. I knew. I saw it as soon as I walked in. But nobody else knew. So that antenna has to be monitored, has to make sure it meets the, the standard, general public. I don't know I'm walking by an antenna. I don't know I can stop or not. So the limits, like I said, the FCC made it 50 times lower than public. So it's very, very low, very safe. So compare the value of the tower, which is one milliwatt that you're getting versus the power of the smartphone, 200 milliwatts. Big difference. Once again, power difference and the proximity, how close it is to you. Additional information, FCC Bulletin 56, FCC Bulletin 65. Ever really want to go to sleep? I recommend OET 65. It's about 70 pages of a whole lot of dry stuff. But it is the law. It is the rule. Wireless carriers live and breathe this stuff. They follow this to the letter and they spend a lot of money to make sure they follow the letter. There's also FCC policy on human exposure. There's some American Cancer Society stuff, some New York Times articles, which cites five or six things in the World Health Organization. Hope that answers your question without making you glaze over.
I'm just glad there's not an article from Fousey on here.
Any other questions?
I gotta liven things up a little bit here, wake everybody up here. That's good. No, you've answered my questions and I appreciate the visual as well as you have put it together and, and it helps us understand. You know, clearly, you know, we had a lot of words, but pictures are worth thousands too. So it kind of clarifies some of the questions that, that I had and, and understand that it's not just for a certain number of people in an area, but it hopes, hopefully it will help the majority of the community as well. Any other questions of council this time? Check, we may have you back. Thank you. This time we're gonna, uh, does anybody need to take a break?
Oh, that's cool.
Just want to make sure she's typing and she has to get every word.
She's young.
We'll, we'll open this to public hearing. Uh, this time again, if your comments have been covered, uh, they've been questioned. I do have a couple of questions that I want to ask, uh, Mr. Kevin Lowry. He presented a, a document for us, so I do have a question or two for him. If you'd like to come up, let me ask that question real quick. We received this, I just need to know, uh, who, who's the author of this? And if that person is available for any questions?
Um, so they're not here tonight. It is Campanelli and Associates and, uh, his attorney, uh, she compiled this 106-page document on our behalf.
Okay, thank you. So we could contact them if there's any questions that we have in regards to their comments.
I don't know about that. We have retained them and I don't know their willingness to respond to.
All right, thank you. That was my question. As we open this up for public hearing, be aware as well as the council, I just want you to know that we're here to protect property rights as well as your rights, as well as the rights of the property owner who owns the property of where the proposed cell tower is. They have rights as well. And I think it's been pretty clear that there are a lot of things that could go on this C2 commercial piece of property. And a cell tower is one of them. There's also many other things that could be built that would never come before us for a public consideration or for a conditional use permit, that they could just meet the code and come in tomorrow and build a, a 45-foot building along the back of, of that property line. So understand that their rights have to be protected as well as we're trying to protect your rights as well. So at this time, I'm going to open this up for a public hearing, a public comment. And when we close the public, uh, hearing time, we will not take any more questions unless somebody from the, or comments, unless somebody from the council specifically asks you to elaborate on something. So this is your time now to, to talk. Just please raise your hand when you come up, list your, your name and your address and we'll share and be respectful of others and their time. Thank you. So come on up, ma'am.
Um, I'm Sandy Goodrich and I live at 601 North 43rd Avenue, which is pretty close to where they're going to build this monstrosity. So good evening, members of the city council. I'm just going to read this so I don't make any mistakes and stuff, okay? By the way, before I start, I have fine connection with my phone all over Sholo, going out to Borden Road. Never had a problem and I'm with Verizon. So I'm here to strongly encourage the city council to deny Young's design application for a cell tower to be built in the neighborhood of Fairway Park at 591 North Clark Road, 3980 West Cooley, Sholo, Arizona. The goals and purpose set in your city ordinances here in Sholo, Sections 15, 1 through 69, will be violated if you allow this cell tower to be built at this proposed site. Some of the violations are as follows. Sorry, I get a little nervous. Okay. Even though I was a teacher, I get nervous. Young Design failed to submit a visual resource assessment, a proper one. Number two, Young Design failed to show or meet the standards for a fall zone or safe zone, any potential fires, potential structure failures, potential icefalls or debris falls. Number three, Young Design failed to use hard data. The data they used in their programs is not hard data to support their claims regarding an actual location that the gaps in this, in personal wireless services, a public necessity to this city of ours within the city. And the hard data to support the building of a cell tower at this particular site will resolve those gaps. They didn't show any more reports from other people. So how do we know their reports aren't biased? How do you know what they're telling you is the truth? You should have more than one source of documentation to prove that what they're saying at this site is good. These are, there are more violations listed in the document you received from our lawyers. Those are from the lawyers. We've, we've secured a lawyer, okay? As well as explanation of each violation, which they noted in submission documents that Young Design gave to the City Council and Planning Commission. We are the residents of Sholo who voted you into your positions to work for us, the people of Sholo, not big business. If you allow this to be built at this site, you are stabbing us. The Sholo residents have lived in this area for a long time. And I'm a newer resident, but there's a lot of older residents. You're, you're, you're stabbing us in the back if you allow this here. They can build it somewhere else and they'll get just as much coverage. I bet you any money if you had somebody else do the reports. I know that if they wanted to build this in a lot right next to each one of your homes, you would never allow it. And you know I'm speaking the truth. You would never allow a cell tower going right next to your home, right in front of your yard when you sit in your yard. Um, if you allow this tower to be at this site, you are violating your city ordinances, requirements, and the legislative intent that you swore to follow when elected into your position to follow those city ordinances. Our lawyer's document has presented many lawsuits that won in court against building upset powers based on aesthetics and loss of property values. Therefore, our lawyer's document should convince you of the illegal act you incur if you do not recognize and accept the appeal that we have made. Therefore, I ask you to grant the appeal to have no cellular power built at this site and deny, uh, Young's design, oh, sorry, Young Designs' application. You know? Like I said, we don't know their data is accurate. We need, you need an outside source to audit what they said. Then I might believe what they say. Anybody can make up any kind of statistics to support their big business. So I'm just asking you to consider that and remember, we're asking for empathy. You wouldn't have it built next to your house for your kids to run around, play around, would you? We're just asking that you don't do that either. There are other sites in use and they'll get plenty of coverage. But right now, like I said, I drive around and I get fine coverage and I have Verizon on my.
To extend the conference for 15 minutes.
So I asked you to please consider what I said. And, uh, thank you very much for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In the back.
My name is Jerry Bergstrand. I live at 631 North 34th Drive, which is in the Sholo Golf and Country Club Estates, otherwise known as Bison Golf Course. Uh, I'm here in support of this proposal. I'm one of the customers that would benefit greatly from better cell service. Right now we have not very good at drops, falls, et cetera. But I'm also here as a retired real estate appraiser, because people have commented about the reduction in property values. Uh, it's my opinion, there would be no reduction in property values from this thing. Anybody living next to it has a bigger problem with the commercial zone being in their backyard than this tower being in their backyard. If anything, the improved cell service might help their values a little bit. That's all I had to say. I just want you to consider that there are people that support this in the neighborhood.
Thank you. Kevin?
Yes, thank you very much. I'd just like to focus on a few points from the document that we submitted, that there's four major dangers that have induced local governments to adopt specific setbacks. And they are structural failures, fires, icefall and debris fall. Uh, it's been noted that about 40 people a day walk from our neighborhood over to Dollar General. So they're walking through that area where that cell phone, cell phone tower is proposed and then going over to Circle K. Not to mention Mrs. Cash, who lives potentially within the fall zone. So if, I don't know if anyone's able to look at, um, some of the pictures, but we have provided exhibits, D, E, G and H, where you can see some of these pictures where there have been, for example, structural failures. The most common causes of the collapse of monopole cell towers are component failures at the base of the tower and fires. When such failures occur, an entire 60,000-pound steel tower will collapse with its wreckage, landing at a distance equal to, or sometimes greater than the height of the tower. Mrs. Cash lives 125 feet from within that, uh, tower, potential tower.
Her property line is 125.
Thank you. And, uh, it's interesting because, you know, if it were in a place that there wasn't a house that close, we wouldn't have to worry about, uh, herd danger. So also fires, this is an interesting point that the, that was made in the document. At least once per month, a monopole cell tower somewhere in the US will burst into flames and an unspecified number of them will thereafter proceed to collapse in a flaming heap. So these are examples you've seen, that you've had a time hopefully to read the document. So you've been able to see the examples, the pictures, the YouTube videos and the news broadcasts of this actually happening where they catch fire. They do fall and they do fall from the base. And it has happened, which meets the criteria of evidence. Another interesting thing is an icefall. So if ice is formed upon these, um, monopine limbs and then they begin to, uh, they, they, they begin to warm up, then potentially this ice could fall off of this onto people's homes or people walking there. So we already know that pedestrians walk from here to go to Dollar General and Circle K. So there are other places where you're not putting the neighborhood, children, their dogs and other people walking through there. There's other options. So why would we make this such a high risk? And for homes and potential homes there in that area? So a natural but well-known danger that is also associated with the placement of monopole cell towers is close proximity to homes or public areas is ice and the genuine risk that can come during the winter, early spring when ice, which is formed upon installation, begins to melt, comes loose and hurtles to the ground. As logic would dictate, if chunks of ice fell from a height of five stories, this is potentially 11, they could seriously injure or kill anyone they strike. Anyone coming in close proximity to the undersized fenced-in compound proposed by Young Design would be well within the icefall zone of the proposed tower.
Mayor, I got a comment, question, or try to slow them down a little bit. I, I just got a real quick comment, if I can make one. That document is from the company that we can't contact, correct? That you're reading right now? Cause you said we can't contact them. So I think some other people made a comment that their, their documents could be false. So this is a company that we can't even call and ask any questions, correct? Just curious.
I don't know. I mean, I.
Well, you said that when you came up, that you have this document and you're reading from it, but we can't contact. That doesn't make sense.
Well, if I've retained them, I have to pay for it.
So, okay, never mind, just keep going. But to me, all the, you're reading that, but to me, it doesn't make any sense because we can't verify if all that's correct. Just like you said about them.
Thank you for my opportunity. So also just like to mention on my fourth point is that debris fall. So you can actually have these limbs fall off. So if they fall, they potentially could fall on somebody. We have examples of hard evidence from news broadcasts, which is, which has been presented to the city. While the rest of the country is actively enacting and enforcing ordinances to require safe zones around wireless facilities to protect their citizens and the public from the well-documented dangers described here and above, it would behoove the city of Sholo to apply its ordinance similarly, similarly. So I'd just simply like to end by saying that, you know, a, um, a memorandum is simply something that could be used in the future if damages were to occur. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I did take the time to look at a lot of the, the photographs and some of the, the comments that were there and, and look at some of the aging of some of those, uh, cell towers that have fallen. There's a lot that has changed from design and structure, uh, that are a little bit more modern than some of those catastrophes, but they are real and they do happen. And appreciate that. Ian?
Michael McMullin, uh, 401 North 40th Circle. Um, I think if you look at the facts here, if this cell tower fit on a plot of land, you'd have a lot of same arguments here. People don't want this cell tower next to their house, obviously, like the other gal stated. Um, the reductions that they're talking about here are not small. They're anywhere from, I think, if I'm looking at about 30, 25, 40%. They're not like, let's squeak this in here. Um, it kind of bothers me that they're even talking like, we're talking roadways. We can't move it any closer than 200 feet to a roadway, but it's okay to move it 75 feet closer to a residential area. That doesn't make sense to me.
It was a visual, I believe that it was a visual corridor that was set up, uh, at the time. But wasn't a variation there.
They're talking about being able to see the tower versus the tower falling.
Right.
That's a big difference.
Anyone else?
Holly McMullin and I also live at 401 North 40th Circle. Um, anyone that wants to come by tomorrow, I am going to be remoting in from my hotspot at my house. It works fine inside, so I would highly challenge the data that was presented today. I telecommute to the valley, to a company in the valley and work from my home up here. I will acknowledge that there is congestion. You see it when you go into town. I sat out in my Jeep out here and my service actually sitting in front of this building is worse than the service inside my home. So I would recommend that before you okay this, that you actually get valid data to support his claims. Thank you.
Gentleman here?
Yeah, I'm Walter Hetty and I live at 4001 West Cooley. First of all, I'd like to contradict what, uh, gentleman there just said. He didn't say you couldn't call them. He just said he didn't know if they would accept the call. I'm sure since they wrote the document, they would accept your call and, and, uh, verify any data that they have. Okay. Uh, the next thing I wanted to bring up, uh, with you guys, well, I'm not a silver-tongued talker, so my stutter and stammer, bear with me. But, uh, denying the tower at that location is not denying a tower be put in. These companies, they have alternate sites that they have picked up in case they can't get one, one of the site. And you know they're going to put one in because they can make lots of money off of these towers. Uh, next point I sort of wanted to bring up too, is when you listen to a company reps, they're real good at, at selling their product. That's why they're employed. So you need to sift through what they say and verify what they say before you make your decision. Uh, I've seen a lot of this in court because I used to present my cases before the magistrate in court. Uh, he's there to sell his product. And the other point I wanted to bring up is, uh, I gave you a map and, uh, some photographs of an area that, uh, I had looked at. I couldn't really see the map on the deal. My eyes aren't that good anymore. But, uh, I don't know if he addressed that particular area or not. Uh, but this site I did pick up when he was talking, that, uh, your best coverage is, is line of. But this site I did pick up when he was talking, that your best coverage is line of sight. Well, from the location that you have on that, I'm just showing you that there are other locations. From that location that the map is on, even from the city land or the Forest Service land, you have clear sight into town, you have clear sight all the way out towards Clay Springs, have clear sight pretty much all the way down into here where the location is and, well, even into this part of town. Plus, you have a clear sight to the tower that's over on Whipple Street and the tower that's sort of north that Verizon is using now down below. So it would be pretty much in the middle of those two sites, which he also said is one of the criteria that makes it the best is if it sets in between two of the other One thing about another site, especially this one that I gave you, is that improvements can be done to it. They can upgrade it without having any problems with having to increase the height near a residence. Or if they need to put in a generator because they lose power every once in a while. Also, on the area I gave you, since the Forest Service and city property is there, the city could receive the lease of the land.
You're referring to the city property that's up by the well? And this was one of the sites that he addressed today, that they have another tower very close to that site.
Yes. The one to the north, it would be to your, I got to think how you're sitting.
Well, be to the west that you have here off.
It's within three quarters of a mile of where this location is, is one of the towers that they're actually using now.
Right.
And, but, and they claim how safe they are. The city, if they wanted to do something for the public, they could actually put it in there, not even charge of them, just lease it to them. Now, I don't know what the rules on that are either. And another good point about these kind of areas are, is they have no impact on any of the people around. This would be set off well away from the houses, wouldn't ruin the view of people-
To extend the conference for 15 minutes.
I've been talking that long. But that's really the only points I sort of wanted to bring up on that is just because you deny this area, doesn't mean they're not going to come in, put a tower someplace else, because I'm sure they've already have alternate sites that they've selected in case they couldn't get this. Companies don't put all their eggs in one basket.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening to us.
Anyone else? Yes. Evening.
My name is Lynette Behar, and I live at 2300 North Cottage Trail in Cholo. And I just want to point out, this man here talking about OET Bulletin 65. Well, I just want to say that yes, you can go right online and you can look at it, 70 pages or whatever page you said. Okay, the first time the FCC did that was in 1985. So then when you go on the computer to look at OET Bulletin 65 today, it says August 1997. This is before, what is it, 3G? So there is going to be an effect on the people. And I wrote to the Planning and Zoning that in 2004, firefighters were stationed near a 2G cell tower. And when they were exposed to that, they had lack of focus, severe headaches, depression, sleep deprivation, tremors. So the International Association of Firefighters, that is the IAFF.
Ma'am, please address the counsel.
They oppose the use of fire stations as base stations for towers until a study is conducted and it is proven that such sightings are not hazardous to the health of our members. I just want to make that clear.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Susan Wakely, and I live at 400 North 40th Circle. I would like to, somebody explain to me like a dead zone area. When we ever drive by certain areas and stuff like in Phoenix, and you'll see a cell phone tower, and then it's right by the tower, there's no reception. You lose it. That part, you know, so if they put it there is our very little local area going to be dead. And if it is, what would they do about it? And then the other thing is that they're talking about that it's fairly safe to you further away it goes. But with that said, if it's not going to be a real tall tower, how safe is it from our little 200 to 300 yards from this tower? How safe are we going to be from that? So I personally think that it's a lot worse than what they're trying to say that it is. But thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, this time I'm going to close the call to the public. I'm going to come back to our attorney. I'm going to ask him for clarification, just on some of the things that if we were to pass this, that would be in violation of our own code. If you'd like to, you know, address that, please.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. I think Mr. Trigask has kind of addressed this in his opening remarks. It's not against the code to reduce these setbacks. It clearly states in there that you can do, that Planning and Zoning Commission had the authority to do that if they felt that the goals of the ordinance were being met. But it's not a violation of the code to reduce.
Anything in the code that requires us to have hard data?
Our city code? Nothing in the city code, no. To meet the goals of the ordinance is basically what the city-
Can I ask a question? Morgan, okay, we can ask for setbacks and we can change the setback, but have we done that numbers of time in City of Cholo, or have we just done it once or twice?
You have to ask Mr. Trigask of that. I know we did one just recently. Was it over here on the cell one? It says there's-
And was it, I guess, Justin, then was it as big as what we're doing the setbacks on this?
Mayor, Members of Council, the previous two towers that were referenced previously in the staff report that were 80-foot high, both of those received setback reductions by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Again, on an 80-foot tower, 125%, I'm not going to do the math in my head, but it's more than 80 feet. The most recent tower, that was allowed about a 20-foot setback from a residentially zone property. The tower before that was also an 80-foot tower, and it was allowed, I think, to meet a 20-foot setback from the adjacent property as well. So those both received 60-foot reductions to the fall zone. And also, in the case of most recent tower, very significant reduction to the residential setback.
So the tower you're talking, the two you're talking about is the one over by the old Ricks, cell one, right downtown?
Yeah, so the cell one by the Navajo County Health Department building, that was the first one. The second one was the cell one tower there on White Mountain Road behind the cell one office.
Thank you.
Any other questions, the council? You want to address, Morgan, I know it was brought up, and I just want to cover some of these questions about, the gentleman said that we are reluctant to, I know our code doesn't allow them to grant, Planning and Zoning at least, to change the setback for the visual corridor of the 200 feet. Can you tell us why that is a hardened set possibly on that particular setback? Although it is an option that this council possibly could require them to go before the variance commission and ask for a variance of that setback of the visual corridor still?
Well, I don't know all the reasons why the 200-foot visual corridor was set up, but I imagine it's to keep, as you're driving, to keep things from distracting you and keeping things away from the road. There may be other reasons why that was done. But in order to get a variance from that setback, you have to go file for a variance through the Board of Adjustment, to grant a variance based on several things under state statute, the size of the lot, the shape of the lot, the topography of the lot. There's different reasons why they could grant a variance. It has to go through the Board of Adjustment. That's set up by state statute. When variances are granted, you have a Board of Adjustment grant, so it's not the council or-
Hopefully, that helps, you know, clarify that issue there. Appreciate it. Any other questions? Councilmember Kelly?
Yeah. I would have thought of this sooner. I would have asked the question today. This 15139, when did we do this? Does anybody have that answer handy? When was that done?
The original code, Justin, do you know?
So Section 15169, I believe that's the one that Councilman Kelly's referring to.
Yeah, it refers to-
Wireless cell communications.
That we can reduce setbacks for certain things, but not aesthetics, not visual corridor. Yeah, I didn't know if we had a date on that, but- My point is, as you're looking, maybe you've come up with it quick. Go ahead.
I've got it here if you're ready for it.
Thank you, sir.
Now, that was done through ordinance number 493, which is dated June 19th of 2001.
With that, I would offer an apology to everybody within the sound of my voice, because that meant I was there. And how in the world I could set through an idea that a visual corridor was more important than human being is beyond me tonight. Okay? If I'm understanding this whole thing, we do not have the power, even as the council tonight, to move this thing toward the road and get it away from these homes. I have to admit, a total failure in seeing what I was part of, unless I voted against it, and I don't remember that.
Then we know you weren't absent.
Yeah. Well, I wasn't absent. I can pretty well bet you I was not absent at that meeting. I'm frustrated beyond belief with everything I'm hearing. You can get on the internet and you can read how this stuff is absolutely deadly. And you can listen to experts, that I recognize some expertise from you, sir, that says it's basically safe. I've been hearing about this 5G or G5, I don't even know which way to say it, and how much more dangerous it is and 100 times more potent and all of this thing. Oh, I don't know, but why a council would set and say, we're going to respect this visual corridor and how ugly these things can be? And if somebody thinks the ones we have in town that are supposed to look like pine trees look like pine trees, I stand amazed at that opinion. I mean, they do not look like pine trees in my consideration. I don't know, as I read this, I saw they have, they, Planning and Zoning Commission, have the authority to reduce these setbacks, provided it enhances or meets the better need of the goals of these eight policies. And I can't see a single one of the eight that it enhances. I don't know which one or ones the Planning and Zoning would think that the goals are better met by reducing these setbacks. I, I happen to have a little different opinion after 40 years in the real estate business than the gentleman earlier that spoke. However, he's got a credential of appraisal and I don't. But I know a very significant number of people that I work with will simply not buy a property near the cell tower. Now, that could be based on their ignorance of the fact that it represents a health risk as well as they might think it just looks that bad. Don't know. But I know, they tell me, don't even show me a property that's in close proximity to that. Reminds me of the story of the guy that feared in the mountains, his car thinking a rock was coming down off the hill and killed some of his family in a wreck, and all it was was a tumbleweed. Well, you know what? His perception killed family members. And I can't believe there's no reduction in the value based on the percentage of people I know won't buy in that location. Now, I've always heard, you know, you only need one buyer trying to sell a property, and I agree with that concept. So just go find one that is totally convinced that it's completely safe.
To extend the conference for 15 minutes.
I am very, very frustrated at myself, and I don't know if it's even proper to ask the Planning and Zoning Commission, which one of these eight or more of these eight, they think goals are met by reducing these setbacks. But if it is proper, I would like to have accounts, Planning and Zoning Commissioner tell me which one of these they think is better served by reducing. Oh, I don't know, Mayor, if a motion is in order at this time?
I don't know if quite yet. I want to give liberty for Brant the way in if he wants to.
I will withhold at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clark, is there, okay, Councilmember Hat?
Brent, did you hear that? Do you have anything to say now?
Not right now, I don't. Thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity to speak, but I will forego comments at this point. Yeah, I'll just hold off for now.
Was there anyone who, I'm sorry for, I closed, called the public. Was there anybody who called in online?
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Good that you asked that before.
I would have told you.
Any other comments there? Gene, I'm just going to weigh in a little on what you said. All of the valuation, I know it's been brought up a time or two, but I don't think it holds a whole lot of water in the fact that, yes, it could either add or distract, that's a given, but you made that decision when you bought next to a commercial property. That property's been Zone C2 for a long time. And when you bought a property there, then anything could be built in that C2. And to say that that's going to affect my values, that may be a true statement, but I don't- but I don't think that it should affect our vote one way or the other, because it was a C2 when you moved there, possibly. And that happens all over. That's the give and take of location, location, and what can come across the street and what can't be built across the street. We have to protect that when we make those decisions. Any other council comments? Councilmember Leach?
So, do we have one of these that look like a tree in this town? If they do, I've never seen it.
We do it well, number five on Whipple. It's been there for 15 years and you haven't spotted it.
If there was a fence around it, I'd probably seen it.
Good.
I mean, that's, once again, that's, I don't make, mean to make funny out of it, but the fence is ugly. The tower, I, just real quick, I got to tell the story, because I was sitting at Flagstaff at a restaurant with my wife having lunch, and I seen this guy climbing a tree, and I thought, wow, that guy's crazy. But the way he was going up this tree, he wasn't going up the limbs like we did as kids, he was going up this ladder. And then I realized it was a cell tower, so then I drove over there. True story, I know, I know a lot of people think they look ugly. I think the regular towers are putting a 180-foot one in pine top down the road that's just metal, and that is ugly to me, but at least we have this. But anyway, after I sat there, I had to drive over there to look at this tower that I knew was a tower now, and once again, the fence was the ugly part of this whole tower. So, and I know we need data up here, I know we lost some service, I think it was Saturday, whether this would have helped that or not. I mean, I switched over my, my computers over to data, because I've got a MiFi that I started using, so I don't know if it would benefit. And you're right, whoever said something about it, I think she did, about it's his perception of his data, his, but the same thing with the attorneys, the same thing was, is, is that one. So, and then you got to, we sit up here and think, okay, we have 20, 30, 40 people that think this is a crazy idea, put in the tower where it's at. We all probably know we need data, but where it's at is the problem. I think that's what my understanding is. But we have, say, 15, 20,000 people that were sitting up here represented as well, not just the ones that are here don't like it because of where it's at. We all know we need it, but we don't like where it's at because it's not in my backyard. I don't know, I got to, I wish I had, it would have fit in my backyard, because I'd let them put it in my front yard with my horses, but if I can lease that out there with them. So, in my backyard, man, I would rather have this there than a 45-foot whatever building there in my backyard. So, there's other things, and it still could happen, and that's, like the mayor said earlier, we can approve or deny this, but we could still have a 45-foot building there without even coming to us. And that's kind of scary too, because now that is in your backyard. So, I don't know, like I said, I, I know we need the data up here, I know that for a fact, I think we all do in this room, it's just, we don't want it in our backyard. I wish my front yard, it would work in my front yard, because I'd let them put it there.
I think one thing that I realize that's changed too, it's not our perception to talk about this, that the safety is definitely a concern. It's one of the things in our code about the safety and the health, you know, but I think that concerns a lot with the fall zone. When we look at the safety, it's regulated by the federal government with these people. It isn't, it isn't regulated by state, it isn't regulated by city, it's regulated. Is that correct? There, so it's regulated by the federal government, the safety standard. Probably about a year ago, the state of Arizona passed an ordinance that allows 5G to be go-in in the right ways. Okay, so they could be putting 5G in, and that's line of sight every 500 feet or so all down the Deuce of Clubs there, and there isn't a whole lot that we could even say or do, it will never even come before the city council or before planning and zoning. It was passed as an ordinance throughout the state. So, that's where we're headed, that's where we're going, those are the things that are happening in our community. I think COVID has shown us a great need for cell service, a great need for data. One of the biggest things that we need in the whole region, county, is how do we bring better broadband to our communities and a lot of things there. Nobody wants anything in their backyard but of something that's very nice. Nobody wanted the city hall where it was built, across the street when it was built, but it was built there. Many things they haven't. I attribute cell one, we're putting in flagpoles that were cell towers for many years, and it looked good. We have given one variance on that 200-foot buffer to be able to go. It was a very unique situation and a unique case, and I would almost, you know, like a motion to be directed possibly that if we were to approve this, and there again, I'm going to go back to the code, Gene. We say if you're going to deny it, tell us why you're denying it for one of these reasons, but if you're going to change the setback, you don't have to provide a reason as why you agree that it should happen. Okay, and maybe that should be stated that they, because we could, and it's not fair for us to ask, you know, planning and zoning, we probably should have asked that question prior and known where it was, but they didn't have to give a reason as to why they were willing to change that setback. We do have also the buffer of the property line, there isn't a building on the property line, but the set, rear setbacks of those homes, I believe, are probably 20 feet. So, you have an additional 20 feet before it hits a structure. You have the icing. There again, I think that direction can be handled by, is somebody trespassing on the property in order to get a sheet of ice fall on them? They were somewhere that they shouldn't have been, if that happens, because they were trespassing across a private property. If they stayed on the sidewalk and got hit, then that's, becomes a possible liability of the tenant of that structure. Okay, but as far as those things that are involved, I think it's part of what we have to look at, and is it something that we either uphold, what Planning and Zoning has already passed, or we deny it, or we prove it with some type of additional condition as far as maybe addressing the fencing and maybe recommend that they take it to a variance to see if the variance would allow an encroachment upon that 200 feet to move it closer to the street to provide more safety. And that's something that we could recommend to be done. Councilmember Leach?
Justin, I got a quick question for you, I'm sorry. The mayor brought up the ice falling. What, the size of this fencing that, well, I wish we can camouflage if it's approved? The fencing around that, what, who determines the size of it? Is the ice falling from that, from this tower, cover that area? Is the fencing, or is it all the same size no matter what tower? Tell me, if, if somebody, I think somebody brought up, if a piece of ice falls off of it, will it fall in that fencing area or no? I'm hoping I know the answer, I'm hoping that's why you have to put, I know it's not the only reason, but maybe the fencing's the size.
There's an algebraic formula given and the best on the velocity of the wind, so we don't know how much the wind's going to be blowing.
I went to Sholo High School, so algebra wasn't there, so I don't know anything about that. And I know the wind can blow ice off of trees, and a real tree, I get all that, but I'm just curious of why a certain size fencing?
So, the elevation plan that you have in front of you right now, that shows that the fencing does extend beyond the majority of the tree, but you can see on one side there that it does not go to the furthest extent of the branches on the other side. So, if somebody was walking through this property, they potentially could walk underneath those branches and still be outside of that fence.
So, now you know where I'm going next. So, can that be extended, that fencing, or why, so there is no fall zone for that? Or no?
So, no, we don't have, in code, we don't have any type of requirement for understory protection.
Well, I get that, but we can recommend that, right?
You could, I believe, as a condition of approval, require that the entire leased area be fenced, including the understory of that monopine.
You're making your fence, your ugly fence bigger.
Well, hopefully we get, hopefully we put a trash can in front of her or something.
You're going to make a bigger ugly fence.
Put a dumpster in front of it. Thanks, Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilwoman Kikabas?
Just for clarification, the design of the monopine, well, five, is it? That's a different design than this.
That is correct, yeah. Technology marches on, this pine tree is to a higher standard than the one at well number five.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. First thing I want to, I like to, like to thank Planning and Zoning Commission for, you know, I have to make a decision that both John and I, and has been on Planning and Zoning, so Brent, and some of those decisions you have to make is a little rough. I know when Junior and I was on it, it was when everything was blowing up and everything else back in 2007, six, seven, eight, and nine, so we had a lot of subdivisions going, and there's a lot of different things that happened. So, we had some, we made some decisions in Planning and Zoning that was overturned and changed by the city council. And so, we, we went and talked to them and everything else. So, I understand, and I want to thank the Planning and Zoning Commission for everything they did for this hour. The good thing about what's going on with this council is if you see there's so, so much diversity, we can come together, we can laugh, we can joke, we all have different opinions, we all have different ways we project ourselves, and, but yet, we come back together as a council and we serve the people. Just like the mayor said a long time ago, at the beginning of this thing, we are here to protect the people that own the property, to do what they want to do with their property, but we also protect the residents of Sholo, make sure that they're protected too. So, I asked some questions tonight, just to ask where, where this thing can be and where it can handle. The setbacks are 43 feet and 75.2 feet. I asked if the tower being low, is that better, or is it being on the mountain or little ridge top a little bit better? It seemed like a ridge top a little bit better. I don't know what well this is.
I think number seven.
Number seven? It's over by my house. And
Your front yard?
No, my backyard, my horses are back there, they got a nice fence and gate around them. But, I guess my, my concern is, even with, like the mayor and everybody said, with C2, we could, you could put up a building, you could put up a motel, you could put up another store, you could probably have a family dollar next to a Dollar Tree, we don't know. But it might look a little bit better than a big tower sitting up there, but yet, that's, that's the freedom of what you have.
To extend the conference for 15 minutes.
I got 15 more minutes?
No, not here.
But, you know, you could have a tower, or you could have a nice building. I think, like Gene was talking about, I think with a building there, if it was another store or something like that, your property value would probably be a little bit better than having a tower next to it. I, I am, I am not really for, for us to change a setback to justify, to put something on a piece of property that is a set stat, a set sign of a property, and now we're going to change it so we can try to get by 10, 10 pounds of something in a five-pound dish. And so, to do that, you know, we're, you're saying we're legal, Planning and Zoning was legal to do the setback, we can change that. I'm just, I'm just not real happy with, would have to do this, the setback change. I think, you know, we, as once we set code and everything else, and people buys, I didn't buy a piece of property to put a oversized building on it, because I'm not sure if it's going to work or not, so I want to make sure that everything fits in there. This tower, I think, is in the, in the wrong place. I think this, this here by the well seven, I guess, is that what you're saying? Up there by our place, bunch of vacant property behind it, it's on a plateau, a little bit better. The dead zones I have, and I've been a Verizon customer for over 15 years, the dead zone I have is up there going towards Walmart. There's no dead zone down here, I have no problem getting all my data, I have no problem with anything else. I understand that we need to have areas where we can pick up broadband and everything else, and to do that, the waves is out, it expands out more than just underneath that tower, and so to get it up a height and get it out, I mean, just look at New Trios and Greer and stuff like that, Verizon just put towers in there and tried to help them out, but at the very beginning, people underneath it had no service. It was just, that's just the way it was. I understand about making it look like a tree, hide it, it's still going to be 45 to 50 feet above the top of the other tree. So, I just have major concern. The one thing is the people that live around it, I understand, looking at this tower, we as a city went down through the downtown Sholo, and we took, we spent half a million dollars and we took down a bunch of telephone poles and power. Now, we did that to make a view a lot better. Now, I'm trying, we are trying to tell you that this tower is going to be better to put in your yard, but we spent half a million dollars to tear down our trees, but yet, we're going to have, put this up in front of yours, and so I have a hard time swallowing that. So, with the setbacks, with making that, I just, I just have a hard time doing it, so that's where I'm at.
Any other comments? I think the dead zone issue, that it wouldn't be a dead zone, I mean, the only, with putting this tower in, but you'd still have service there, a dead zone is kind of like up where there is no activity at all, where you can be reached, and so that becomes a dead zone. But once this tower was put in, there wouldn't be a dead zone right close by it, correct? I want to ask a question, with the setbacks that we have, just with safety, with health, that's better served, and trying to think what Planning and Zoning, still at 110 feet, if that thing were to fall and even gain 20 feet, it would fall at 130 feet, it still would not reach any structure that we have anywhere in the proximity.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'll go back to that one right there. That map shows the setbacks to the adjacent property to the north is 93.8 feet. The adjacent property to the west is 124.7 feet.
That's the property line, so we have at least 140 feet there to a structure, correct? That's a habitable structure.
So, this Cash's property is down here, 124 is measured straight line here, so at a diagonal, you're going to be more than 124 plus the setback on the back, so you'll be over the height of the actual tower. To the north here at 93.8, to the property line, again, there's a parking lot, there's parking spaces. I do not have direct, actual dimensions to the structure itself, but in looking at the aerial, I would estimate that you have more than the 20 feet between the property line and the structure for the property to the north. Again, I'm just backing it up here. So, you can see this is the nearest property line. So, there's a fairly significant distance between the structure and the property line itself.
Thank you. So, as far as safety, we're, I relatively can say that we're still safe in the fall zone of a, of a habitable structure there. And Gene told me that if I get to know him better and I start to think like he does, then I'm doing pretty good. And so, trying to think what he was thinking 20 years ago, and one of the difficult things that you have is when you have a 200-foot or visible corridor, and that variation that we can have on the backside, try to find a commercial property that's at least 400-foot deep in depth, okay, is what you'd have to have at least, just to meet our code, 200 from the visual and 200 from there, without any, any type of adjustments. And when you look at the commercial property, a lot of it isn't that deep, and that's why some of these sites that you find and you look through, through here, don't have that much depth to commercial properties. 100, 200, 300 feet is a lot of your depth. You get up into some of your bigger developments where Walmart and things are there. So, we're going to have this problem going forward, wherever they try to look and find, and until the city, Planning and Zoning looks at changing and amending our And until the city, Planning and Zoning looks at changing and amending our code and, and regulations as more of these towers will possibly be proposed in our community. Thank you.
I would like to thank you for clarifying what I was.
I was trying to think possibly, but, but on that side. So that's the only reason why I could think that they, we would adjust those two setbacks and, and not the front one. Because as Vice Mayor said, we have been concerned about the visual corridor throughout our whole community to try to improve that and to make that, you know, as unsightly as possible. But as I shared, that will change soon when they start putting these towers in our, they'll hook them up to the little sides of buildings and then right of ways in line of sight going forward. I don't have any more. I think I've tried to cover most of the topics of the public that they shared, that their concerns that they had weighed in, and I appreciate that opportunity. At this point, I'm going to look to council if anybody would like to make a motion or if Mr. Park, if you have anything you'd like to share at this time.
No, Mayor, I think I'm okay right now.
Of the applicant, is there anything else you would like to share?
Two things to note, 5G. There's two ways 5G happens. So remember when the networks went from 3G to 4G? They had the spectrum that they were using that was existing and they just changed the technology on that spectrum. So the same thing's happening in 5G. Right now, T-Mobile, Verizon, AT&amp;T are overlaying 5G on existing channels, existing spectrum. So they'll take and carve out 4G from that spectrum and put 5G in. 5G is already in Payson. T-Mobile's got 5G in Payson. Verizon's got 5G in Payson. I think AT&amp;T is following pretty close behind. The second way to look at 5G is millimeter wave. And that's what Mr. Mayor was talking about, where the right of way poles, you can go set, put a set of antennas on a poles and it's something that's gone through a state statute. So there's no local impact. It's just a deal with the right of way. That's millimeter wave. So that's a very high frequency, 28 gigahertz, 39 gigahertz. And that, that area is very small. It's a very small coverage area. When you get to that higher frequency, you, you start walking away from that light pole and you turn right, go past the building, the signal's gone. Very, very small coverage area. You're not going to see millimeter wave up here for quite some time. It just doesn't, it doesn't make sense. It makes sense in downtown Phoenix. It makes sense in downtown Glendale. Makes sense in downtown Mesa, but it doesn't make sense in the more rural area. The second part about, I think one, one lady brought up the fact that it was written in 1996, 1999 for the, for the OET 65. The FCC re-reviewed that in 2019. They called for a whole lot of people to come back together. Let's re-review this for 5G for the higher frequency band. Once again, 5G frequency bands, 39 gigahertz, 28 gigahertz, still non-ionizing energy. So same concept as the radio waves now, like the light bulb. The only side effect is heat. So there's that part of 5G that's going to come along over time. But once again, that's going to be in denser areas. And you have overlay of 5G, just like when networks went from 3G to 4G. Now they'll go from 4G to 5G in the existing band. Whatever technology's riding on those waves, the waves still follow the laws of physics. They haven't changed. The technology's different. In the late, late 80s, when I started in this business, it was analog radio. Right? Lots of power, very wide channel. Now there's lots less power, wider channel, carrying more traffic. So over time, as each technology comes along, it requires less power. So it powers down more and more and more. So the amount of power that was used by a site in 1980 was 100 watts for every amplifier. Now it's 60 watts. Well, that 100 watts with one amplifier ran one phone call. Now 60 watts with one amplifier runs 200 connections because it's data. It's more efficient. So the power's going down. The technology gets better, the power goes down. The only thing different for 5G is it's millimeter wave and then on existing band. I just wanted to make sure and clarify that. Any questions? Yes, ma'am.
Can you tell us what your background is and where you got your qualifications?
Well, I have a WET degree from DeVry. I got that in 1991. I started in wireless in 1987. I started out as a cell tech. I was working on the transmitter stations, doing adjustments. I moved in up into system performance engineering where I do the drive testing, drive around with equipment, take readings. Moved to RF engineering, became a lead of engineer, worked for carriers up until 2003. And I went over to the, to the vendor side. I was RF manager, ran a team of engineers, many markets. Became a director for one carrier, ran seven states, ran 150 people, got tired of politics and said, I want to get engineer again. So I went out and became a vendor to carriers. So I've done 32 years in this business. Yes, ma'am. Any other questions? Thank you.
Member Hatch.
Mayor, I'd just like to reiterate, the expert community that I read, all of I could get my hands on this last four or five days. The FCC has made some very blunt statements about the lack of danger, brought about by cellular. The National Cancer Society's also published information about that. There's not a harm to be had there. World Health Organization, I, I take them with a grain of salt right now, but they've also said that there's not a lot of harm that will come from it. And from what I understand, and I've been away from microwave for a long time, you know, I was on those big tall towers. You could stand and hug one of the panels and not be radiated seriously unless you stood there for quite some time.
The, like, it's averaged over six minutes. We do studies, every site gets studied with a model and models out what the, the specific absorption rate is for a geographic area around the site. And if you're right up next to the antenna, right in front of it, and sitting there for six minutes, you'll get more exposure. It'll be the occupational level of exposure, but it's still occupational. So if a guy's climbing up the tower like the gentleman you saw, he has to take that into account when he's climbing and the radios have to be turned down. Things have to happen so that person can do that or a man lift or whatever. On the ground around it, 1% if that. Sometimes two, if it's a multi-carrier tower where T-Mobile's with Verizon, you might see maybe 2, 2 and 1/2% of the general public limit. 2%, very small, very, very small. You're getting more off your phone because it's close to your head than you're getting off that tower. Yes, sir. Any other question?
Again, Memorial Sloan-Kettering Institute put out cancer center, the lack of danger associated with cellular radiation. But I, I was more concerned, I went out and drove through wonderful area, looking to see what the aesthetic value was or the diminishing of aesthetic value. From individual addresses that I garnered from the correspondence that I had, I went to each of the
To extend the conference for 15 minutes. One.
That's the last time I'm going to push it. In very few cases was I able to see past the foliage and the vegetation in front of your homes if they're facing that direction. I have the same issue. I have a home that has an exposure to the north and east. And I'm looking at one of those cell towers by the water tank. I just look a different direction. If I have vegetation that surrounds my home and I don't, I don't see the problem with it. So anyway, I'm very concerned about it, that people aren't disappointed, that you understand that we have looked at this.
Way above our face scale here. Hang up on him?
Hung up on him. He hung up on us.
Call back in.
Anyway, I went out through your area and looked to see what I would see of that tower. My concern was another thing that had to do with the wind loading on that tower and the ice wall. It's prevailing wind, I believe, is westerly wind across there. And anything that blows is going to be away from the residential area in the prevailing winds. I know that we get circulators up here that go different directions. But I'm not concerned about the health issues. And I, I hear some of your opinions about the aesthetics, but that comes with progress and, and we're serving a major portion of our public that travels through there and lives adjacent to that area that will get better service. But I thank you very much for your attention tonight. All the questions I had boiling up in my mind, they were answered by gentlemen putting together their presentations. Anyway, thank you very much.
We're getting back, yeah. Sorry.
Make sure you push one when
Welcome to the conference assistant. You are the first person in this conference. Please stay on the line.
Hello, Brent?
He's not on there yet. He's here.
Brent, is that you?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay.
Thought we lost you for a minute, had bad reception or something.
Does anybody find the irony of that? That we're talking about cell towers. You guys dropped me.
Hey, you're on a cellphone probably too, right? Okay, at this time, I'm going to look for council if they'd like to make a motion. Councilmember Kelly.
Oh, again, I have a question first. And that is, if a motion is in order, the way this is worded, we're having a public hearing that doesn't state that we will take action. So I ask our attorney, on the agenda, can we make a motion? Or move an action, more properly.
Consideration of the appeal of conditional use permit. So the options that they shared with us, we can uphold the commission decision and approve as submitted. We can amend the commission decision and approve with conditions, with amended conditions. I mean, we can amend the commission decision and approve it with amended conditions, or we can overturn the commission decision, decision and deny the application. And if we do a denial, we must state the reasons for doing so. So as far as legal is concerned, we're okay to proceed with the motion.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kelly.
Yes, in light of not hearing from any planning and zoning commissioner as to what goal was enhanced by reducing the setback. And that is a, a condition of reducing them is that it enhances a goal. I would move to deny the application based on the fact that the property simply does not meet the city specification for all setbacks to be met. And if I might, I'd like to go on and say, if it's seriously considered, that this is the direction we need to go. We need to change the code instead of amending it on setbacks on every, every application we get. When no one can come up with one of these goals, that would be better met. That's my motion with explanation. Thank you.
Do you have a motion to overturn? Is there a second?
Also, yeah.
Second by Vice Mayor. Any other discussion? I'll call for that vote. All those in favor? Any opposed?
Aye.
See that that failed by the two. Councilmember Leach.
I move to approve CUP 602-0423 submitted by Young Design Group on behalf of Verizon Wireless. So a 110-foot mono pine cell tower located at 591 North Clark Road, 3980 West Cooley. That being AP 309-52-027B, subject to staff recommendations. And if I can put a couple of conditions on that, and unfortunately fencing, I think it needs to be in the ice if we can go a little bigger or whatever. And I, I still want to see if there's a way to blend that in. Some kind of stain on the fence. The fencing's fine because I think there, it's an iron wood fence, I believe, but I'd like to see some kind of stained.
Case?
Put it in your motion.
I did.
Was it? An expansion of the?
Expansion of the fencing and also some kind of camouflage staining, whatever on the wood fence.
His motion was to uphold
Uphold.
with the amendments that were approved by the planning and zoning with condition, with additional conditions of extending the fence and also some type of enhancing the fencing crew before, something like that. There a second? Second by Councilmember Hatch. Any other discussion? Do you now call for the vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Did that pass five to two? Thank you. Appreciate those in attendance for your time and for your listening at this time. Go to the next item that we have on the agenda here. Councilmember Park, at this time, will excuse you and thank you for calling in, unless you have anything you'd like to go through with the summary of current events.
Need your schedule?
Yeah, I just want to thank Mel West and his team at the Sholo TV station. I've been able to watch the entire council meeting. That's been very helpful for me. I want to thank Tamara and Rachel and Mr. Mooter for providing this opportunity and making sure that I was able to participate. I want to apologize to those who were in the crowd that I wasn't there personally to be able to participate. Unfortunately, my work took me out of state, so I'm here in Fort Worth, Texas tonight and through the rest of the week. So I appreciate all the staff making it possible for me to participate and hope to be able to join everybody on December 1st. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Before you hang up, we do have a scheduling of meetings that we want to get your input on. I'll turn that to the city manager for a minute.
As you recall, when we had the retreat recently, we talked about flooring and the carpet gym. And we're ready to present some options and let you know where we came up with. We'd like to see if the council's available, possibly Monday at 5 o'clock to go over those. We have a vendor that's already bought the carpet and we need to get word back to him whether he needs to return it or not. So we're just checking your schedule, see if Monday would work for you.
It's the 23rd.
Brent, Monday, the 23rd, about 5 o'clock.
Yeah, I don't think Connie can make it.
6:30.
I'm available, I'm available, Mayor, to meet that time. So I'll, I'll be back in town and I have no problem meeting that evening.
And could you make it, Connie?
We, if, if, if the council would want, we could do it at 6:30 also.
Can't we just do a majority or do you care or something like that?
30 is fine.
30, why not?
Yeah, 6:30.
6:30 is fine and Connie brings pizza.
Okay.
Thanks, Grant. Appreciate it. 6:30 Monday.
All right. Thank you, Mayor.
So we have a summary of current events. I looked at council members for summary of current events. Councilwoman Kavas.
Remind everybody that it's flu season and COVID is still an issue for our community and the rest of the world. So make sure you're getting your flu shot and you're wearing your mask socially distanced and in Thanksgiving.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to let you know, attended a Main Street board meeting. Main Street has updated their webpage. If you'd like to go on and see all the new aspects of it, and it's a little bit easier to get in and out and everything else. And it's sholomainstreet@gmail.com. And it's sholomainstreet@gmail.com. Go in there, take a look at it, and it really looks, really looks nice. During the meeting, a long time ago, we had, if you if you go down where the statues are, there's a, an area there where we have bricks in there with names on it and you can put on whatever you want. We're going to start doing another fundraiser on that and see if people like to put some stuff on a brick and put it in there. Don't have the prices yet or anything else. It's just the Main Street's looking at doing it again. And so hopefully we'll get that process going within the next couple of months. Just want to go through the Christmas shop, small shop, Saturday Downtown Merchant Poker Walk. It's November 28th from 10 to 4. And you can pick up your cards so you can see what what kind of hand you have at any of these 10 participants that's in this poker walk. And that's Perfect Paws, Birdies, White Mountain Leather Company, Deuce's Wild Game Souvenirs, Classic Cookware, Kettles, Horse Station, Books and Treasures, Sweet Home Arizona, and The House. Those 10 places are participating in this poker walk and you'll be able to walk down through there and see what they have and have fun prizes and stuff like that. The next thing is the Sholo Downtown Merchant Holiday Decorating Event. Main Street has given a string of lights to any business that they would like to put up. And then if you want to decorate your business and you don't have the time or you don't have the energy or you don't have the stamina to do that, call Main Street at, well, really, Denise, it's 623-340-4131, and they will come out and help you decorate your business for the downtown.
How about my house?
Huh? No, not your house. You've got too much fence around it. Also, Main Street's going to be helping with the Sholo Christmas Parade, Christmas, this year's the title is Magic, Christmas Magic. And after this COVID-19, this whole year, I think we need some magic, we need some prayer, we need some help, we need everything. But you can register for this parade. The parade is December 5th, and you can register at the Aquatic Center, and it costs, the fee's $20. And you can go in there and sign up and be in the event. And we're hoping we get a lot more participants in that. The next thing I'd like to talk about is the big event that we have coming up on the 23rd of, of this month, that's the next Monday. City of Sholo, Main Street, Meals and Wheels, Senior Center, Sholo. To do a Thanksgiving for the citizens of Sholo. With COVID-19 and everything that's been going on, we've been talking about this for the last couple of council meetings. If you're a resident and you're elderly and you, for some reason, can't cook, can't get out, can't do anything, please bring a can of food or two or a case, whatever you want to, to the Meals and Wheels Senior Center, and we're giving away 300 free meals. And so, and it's first come, first served. And that's just for the people that really need help and they can't provide them a good Thanksgiving dinner. Now, the ones that can provide but have had hard times and maybe you've lost a job, slow income, anything that's hurting, hurting your family, you can bring the same canned corn, beans, whatever you want to do, peaches, and bring it to Downtown Chapel here, right across the street, here on 11th and Huning, right? Yeah. And.
And Cooley. Cooley and Hall.
Hall. And one of those streets that are Cooley, but it's on 11th. We're going, we're going to be giving away 500 turkeys to the first 500 people to show up. And this is just a way for this council and Meals and Wheels Senior Center in Main Street and Sholo High School kids to say thank you and tell you it's been a bad year and to give you a little bit of joy in the holiday season. So please, if you have a chance to do that, we would like to, we would love to get rid of the 500 turkeys in a couple hours. That's what our goal is and that's what our desire is to serve you, the citizens of Sholo, and to give them a great time. So.
Those turkeys are frozen, correct?
Yes, turkeys are frozen. That's the game we're doing on the 23rd. That gives you a few days to get them thawed out. Yes.
Where should we, you need us here over at the Senior Center or do you need us over here?
Staff, I just went over here at Downtown Chapel. We just have staff there and you guys. I would say 10:30. And please, we just, we, we, we just wanted to say thank you to the residents of Sholo.
Thank you.
That's it.
Anyone else? I'll just share, I just want to thank this community and thank you and hope that you have a very special Thanksgiving. We recently finished, we're not finished, but to date, we've been going through our eighth annual Community Fast. This year, we, last year, we raised about $23,000. And this year, we're a little bit above $40,000 so far. And so we just appreciate the generosity of our community and our businesses and the people. And we look forward and we let you know that on the 22nd, Sunday at 6:00 PM, on the 22nd, we'll be having our virtual celebration this year. And that website is www.sholomunityfast.org. And so after 6:00 PM, you can go log in anytime and watch the the virtual celebration that they have. They'll talk a little bit about the recipients last year and what they did with the things that we gave out. So appreciate our community coming together. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few things go over. A reminder that the Aquatic Center, we will be closed for three weeks for annual maintenance beginning Thursday, November 26th, and will reopen for business on Monday, December 21st. The Recreation Department is accepting youth basketball registrations for first through sixth graders until December 23rd. A late fee will apply for those who register after December 23rd but before the end of the year. And if you want more information on that, it's 532-4140. Our crews and a contractor will be working on Christmas lights in the city that will be turned on after Thanksgiving for the annual Sholo shines. They usually, we usually turn those on the day after, the Wednesday before, around Thanksgiving time. The focus will be on the downtown area around Festival Marketplace, Library, City Hall, Long Deuce Clubs, including the Public Safety Building. We have a number of public works projects that were in the process right now. Couple of playgrounds will be completed by the end of the week at Rayland and Archibec Parks. We have the East Hall Sidewalk Project, Cub Lake Road Waterline, West Cooley Sewer Line Projects. We have a lot of projects going on. We just appreciate everybody's patience as we complete those projects. There will be a control burn in the polishing ponds and Penteel Lake north of Sholo planned for tomorrow. So you will see some plumes of smoke on the north, north side of Sholo. And it's planned for that if the weather permitting. And a reminder that city offices will be closed next week, Thursday and Friday, November 26th and 27th for the Thanksgiving holiday. And we just want to send out our best and wishes for a wonderful Thanksgiving to council and to all the citizens of Sholo.
Thank you. Any seconds? All right. Well, we got you home before your bedtime, Ed. That's good. We're grateful for those of you that have been here tonight, those who may be watching on TV, and we just wish you a very happy Thanksgiving and appreciate it. Seeing no other business at this time, I'll adjourn this meeting. Thank you.
Did you say the right city 50? Did you say it right tonight? Are you forgetting?
To turn off the music, press one.